Well, that's part of the...
This is gonna be your suggestion. I'll get your feedback on it.
I think it's called a suggestion.
E-Mai's not here.
I know, I saw him talking to us.
Yes, okay.
Poor baby, he's not having a good time. His wife threw back.
He's like making doctor's appointments and...
He has kids and everything else.
He was sending, texting, he was texting messages to his phone. He accidentally texted to me about it.
Oh really? I missed that part.
I said, "I can't make two," but...
That's 2:30.
Dana, maybe you could do a quick thing for us and send to me and to everyone our, everyone's phone numbers and email addresses while we're here, but also our cell phones in case we need to.
You contacted everyone?
Yes.
What can I do about it?
Well, we have to be careful about open meeting law.
Well, you can say, "Can I get a ride?"
No, that's...
Well aware of open meeting law.
No, no, I mean, you just gotta do something, just hang under your wave.
I'm well aware of open meeting law.
Okay, alright.
It's 2004.
No, no, no.
But the way...
13 years, is that right?
Exactly.
Okay, but it was that.
But, um...
Is this your fourth term?
Fine.
Oh yeah, you had three terms.
I'm just saying, I think that...
Are you appointed? I'm gonna say 14. I'm gonna underestimate.
It's fine.
A hundred and fourteen, that would be too much.
And in fact, I took a screenshot of it. Distribution of minutes, agenda scheduling, forwarding of procedural information, reports or documents may be discussed would not be considered deliberation. So...
Okay.
So they're not subject to meeting law. Just saying. Put the text and say, "Who's going to this meeting? Can I get a ride?"
I can get a ride. I just said a head though. I'm very old fashioned. I don't text, email, and I call.
Okay.
So, if you send me a text, I won't know what's got it. My way of protecting myself from an onslaught. Too much brush.
Just maybe I'll tell you the bottom of the schedule, but...
Right after your presentation, you might as well be doing an A and R, which is Jonathan with the sign on.
Yeah, and that's not here, right?
Yeah, so I was gonna do that right after that.
Oh, the A and R is here?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it didn't arrive.
No, we got it.
Okay.
And there's another one later in the events.
So there's one that's not on the agenda?
Yeah, it's not, we didn't do it.
There's A and R directly before the...
The administration one, right?
Yeah, that's Jonathan's 98th one.
Right, but that's just administration because we're all here.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct. It has nothing to do with public hearing.
By the way, can we just do it now?
Oh, we need Jonathan to know that I said...
Oh, great.
We get to be in the room then.
Can we just tell him to sign it?
Yes, we turn the video.
And when we have talk, can we tell the meetings? Well, it's a...
No, we haven't.
Because we have... Oh, we have court.
Yeah, so we do, we turn it to them.
But if you're trying to do things that are...
Okay, well, it's...
Don't require...
Yes.
Like he was saying, let's do it now before the meeting becomes worse.
You two talk.
If we have to have Jonathan, we could...
Right, no, I heard that.
Yeah. Hi, Paul. How are you? I didn't know that's where you live.
You sure? What did?
Now I know where you live.
Oh, I'm looking. That worries me. I know where you live too.
I saw what you did and I know where you live.
Well, then you're gonna rework me.
Right, exactly. All the ice cream in your refrigerator in your fridge.
Come up in that. It should've come up the other day in that, so...
Oh, you had some ice cream.
Well, really, I think that's the same as it did.
Yeah, it's gonna work.
Okay. Where am I now?
So, we're at the Tuni right now, but this is gonna be closer than our cancer. I don't know if salt water's on.
Oh, that's wonderful.
You'd like it. It's a very long river.
That's a lot of glass?
Yeah, a lot, yeah. There's great views, like, I don't know.
Oh, it's a good patch?
I think it is. Good thing. We kinda have to wait until so...
You may or may not be exactly... So we can take a long tour more.
Oh, she's coming on.
Oh, okay. Can we get there before, can we get there before the building is done? Do you have some kind of condition there? You know, person?
No, we're always there. We got it.
Well, it sounds great. What band is that?
It's okay for me. It's not great. Right in a preserve, you know, so it doesn't really have a lawn, which is a little abandoned and stuff.
What kind of dog?
Not sure. Bananas, a little nuts.
Never been banned.
Bananas.
And he's basically, it's only one alphabet, and that, and that, and... Sometimes it takes a long time to bid span. I love the staring contest.
Right.
Tony, we're here. Tony, we're here.
Oh, you mean you may come to your place?
No, we don't. When you, when you have, when you doors it.
Oh, okay. Oh, my God.
Wolves' door.
Right.
You know those?
Yeah.
They're a little more easier to, uh, con. He knows what's like his, uh, hip bone would be like. It's either food or toys, right? Or sleep.
She speaks quite good English. He doesn't, as well.
Did he say he was coming or...
They, they all...
Yesterday, I didn't process. He didn't tell me he wasn't coming.
But they don't understand my pride. They have to regulate everything.
Can you nominate your first?
Yeah, this is the first time.
What's your...
I don't tell them, it's a pillage of property. I have to give them a... I don't understand a body. I guess they're trying to ask about the apology out here, is what they're asking.
Esteban.
Bond is on stroke of the...
Dong.
The Cinderella sounds like going on.
Steve. How are you? Tell me you do everything.
You can sit down there. I heard that. Just a little bit of sense. We did that, it was... Yeah. Oh, well, that's my last chance. Yep.
Okay, it's 7:30, and we're gonna call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is, are there any system comments on any items that aren't on the agenda? Okay, given that, we'll go to our first item on the agenda, which is the election of a new planning chair. Have any ideas, anyone?
Yes, I'd like to nominate.
Go ahead, nominate.
I'd like to nominate the gentleman to my, that would be left, who has been on the board now for three, four years.
Four.
Four years, who has taken a lot of effort and care in fulfilling his responsibilities, who has been forthcoming in dealing with finding equitable ground between 40Bs and neighbors, who has written the N-Star tree trucks to make sure things are done right and to understand how it is done.
For long days.
Long days, and who traveled north from the great state of...
Forgot.
Oh, forgot.
Somewhere down south.
Somewhere down south and has come to the greater state of Massachusetts.
Hard to say these days, yeah.
I nominate Tony Flynn for chair of the planning board.
I would second that, for all the aforementioned reasons, and also because he's willing to do it.
He's willing to do it. Willing to do it.
Because it's quite a job.
It is quite a job.
So we call, we give the nominee. Okay, so I guess I call for a vote on this, on favor of Tony's nomination. Aye?
Aye.
Any votes? Tony, don't start now.
Right, okay.
I would just like to read into the record something from the town website about committee organization that says that the chair of a board or committee is responsible for planning the agenda, providing for posting and notice of a meeting, calling and running meetings, and overseeing committee operations. Customarily, the chair is the spokesperson for the committee. In addition to open meeting law, the chair is responsible for periodically reviewing executive session meeting minutes, which I don't think is applicable to this. For many Western boards and committees, in particular the Board of Selectment and School Committee, which I would note are the other elected committees besides ours, the practice has been to have the chair, officer chair rotate among the members. This practice has the advantage of reinforcing the perception that no one individual, no one individual dominates any board's or committee's policymaking role. This is recommended as a best practice for all boards and committees. So, thank you.
Thank you. Great. So, I have a little presentation to give here. Yes, exactly. Just in the case that this turned out this way.
Power man is ready.
Good evening, folks, the audience here and at home, I know a lot of people watch on tape. I wanted to let you know that I'm honored to be selected to this position, and I feel a deep responsibility to do a really good job for the town and for neighbors, and also for the developers that are making our town a better town over time. So, is there, there's a significant change to the planning board. We have a new member in Alyssa, and I'm Alyssa, and I'm the new chair. And so it's a 40% change. So, what I thought you guys deserved is a little bit of update on the planning board. So I'm gonna take about 10 minutes and give you an update on the planning board, if that's okay. So, the question that I get asked most often about the planning board is people say, "What are the basics of the planning board anyway?" So I thought I'd take some time and talk about the basics of the, of the planning board and answer the question to begin with, you know, what is the constitution of your planning board? From a laws and regulations standpoint, Mass General, Massachusetts general law and the Western bylaws establish our entity, the planning board, its role and its jurisdiction. The zoning bylaws of the town provide the specifications that guide our decisions. And there's a certain section of the bylaw that's very apparent and often used by us. It's called the standards and criteria. So you hear when we talk about lighting, when we talk about earth movement, when we talk about neighbor impact, those sorts of things are actually listed in the standards and criteria. We aren't just making it up ourselves. It's not just our opinions. We've studied the standards and criteria, and we apply that to the cases, or we try our best to apply it to the cases in front of us. Next down the line, there's something called the planning board guidelines, and these are all available on the website. They provide the detailed specifications taken from the specifications above. So for example, in the standards criteria in lighting, it talks about minimizing glare amongst neighbors. And the detailed specifications specify that the maximum number of lumens in a new house is 22,000 lumens. So that's taken care of for all the standard criteria, most of the standard criteria become more specific when it comes to the guidelines. Then there's the planning board rules and regulations, and that establishes the process by which all this happens. So from the, it specifies how an applicant applies, all the way to the decision, the documents that are required, and also in many cases, the timing that happens. So that's the, that's the basis of the laws and regulations. And then there's the jurisdiction or the permit types. So the first permit type we have is a site plan review. So we'll hear proposals for new residential homes, for example, that are over 6,000 square feet or over 10% in square footage divided by the property, the acreage of the property. Second of all, we'll hear a new residential on scenic road. That'll come before us if it's new. And then we'll hear proposals for most commercial developments, and those are all under site plan review. Then we'll also hear for special permits. So FSD is a flexible subdivision. It's a different way of dividing land than is allowed in the zoning bylaws, but it's done for a reason that's a benefit to the town and a benefit to the developer. So we hear cases where people are proposing flexible subdivisions. We also hear about day camps. We also hear about earth movement. We also hear about scenic roads. So when there's a tree, someone is proposing a tree to be removed that's in scenic road, then we'll take a look at that and also...
In the right way.
In the right way to the scenic road, exactly. Or stone wall removals along scenic road. And then there's something that I still understand really, it's called approval not required, but actually our approval is required for an approval not required application. So it's almost like a jumbo shrimp kind of thing to me. That, I was considering that in site plan review.
What did you say, Steve? We couldn't hear you.
I said there's also limited site plan review for schools and public projects.
Right, thanks, Steve. So what is our, our mission? Our mission is to help balance new development with preserving the semi-rural nature of Weston. So truth be told, we don't yet have a mission, so why just put this together for this presentation? So I thought, I thought it captured the essence of what, you know, my four years and four hours of working with folks in the, in the room today, in the board today. I thought it captured the essence of what we're about. But I look forward to working with the board and fine tuning the mission if that's something we want to do. So I also will bring your attention to the bottom, just to give you a sense of the scale of what we do. So in 2018, there were 43 permits issued, or about 6% of the permits are the homes that were permitted into town. So that gives you a sense. It's about a permit a week, and about half of those permits are amendments versus new buildings, right? So that gives you a sense. There's a new building permitted every couple weeks, about every three weeks out of this board. So sometimes, in my opinion, we get too much credit for what we do for the town because most of the permits are happening outside of our jurisdiction, and sometimes we get too much criticism in the same way. So the, the basics continues with the planning board members. So you've seen maybe and met many of the planning board members, but I want to do just a quick review of the team up here. So Sue is wonderful. She's, she's served over 13 years. We were just debating up here whether it was 13 or...
14 or 15, I'm really not sure.
She had a very successful and impressive career in nursing, and she's a master gardener, whether it's in title or in practice, I'm not sure.
Practice.
Oh, in practice. And then she also serves on the community preservation committee. So she doesn't just serve on the planning board. She does other things for the town as well. Steve is also wonderful. Steve has served eight years. Do I have that right?
I think it's less, but...
Okay, somewhere around eight years.
I'd take it, maybe it's more like six.
And Steve has a very successful career as a senior architect and manager in an architectural firm in Boston. And Steve served for over two years, was it?
Four years.
Four years in the town center planning committee. And of course, that project just got voted. Thumbs up, and we're looking forward to that project happening in town. So I can be wonderful at times. I, I served four years so far, and I had a reasonable success as a high-tech entrepreneur. And as Leslie says, I've spent a lot of time trying to help the town manage the challenges that they face around 40Bs. Leslie, back to wonderful, is fully wonderful. She served one year, and she has a very successful career as a senior architect, and, and she serves on the sustainability committee.
And, and I was on the HPP and on the police station building committee.
Perfect. Alyssa has newly elected, had a successful career as a retail executive, and has been on the historical commission for, she has a long history of being on the historical commission. Is that right? Something like 14 years?
Mm-hmm.
Welcome, Alyssa. So, myself accepted, I wanted to let you guys know that it's my feeling is a very talented and dedicated group of people, and we're very lucky to have them, and I really feel like they're a great asset to the town, so...
I really accept yourself.
Right. So, a little further acknowledgement as, as we begin, or I begin my statement here. I wanted to acknowledge a few other things with respect to the planning board. First of all, there's someone missing, and it's, you know, it's tough to not have Al here tonight. Al has been, Al had a history of 22 years of service to the town and, and commitment to the planning board mission. And we want to, in many ways, we already have, but I wanted to personally thank Al for his service. And I also wanted to thank him for inspiring us to, to serve as we do. I can tell you that I definitely was inspired by Al, and to take this, to take his position is very tough, very big shoes to fill, as they say. I also wanted to acknowledge the talent and dedication of our planning team, not this team here. I'm talking at the town level. First of all, EMI, led by EMI, and then we, there's a couple folks missing tonight. We have a consulting team, Kim and Dave, that have talent and dedication to bring to the table as well. And then also the town team led by Leon. We often lean on them. You know, Leon provides good guidance to do it to us at times, and good legal counsel as well. So we couldn't do it without them. And I think number one in our, our hearts is, is really the neighbors, right? The amazing contributions of neighbors I've wanted to acknowledge. The number one priority, we feel, in, in our permitting process is to provide a forum for the neighbors. And the neighbors do not disappoint. It, it's my opinion that some of the best ideas come not from us, not developers, but from the neighbors. So we always encourage that, and we're very happy and eager to listen, and they always have an impact. Sure, Dana was a part of the, the planning team, Dana and E-Mai. Thank you. And lastly, I wanted to acknowledge the patience and collaboration of developers. So I know at times it can be a little bit harder in Weston than it is in other towns to get these things permitted, but, you know, we hope and think that it's worth a little bit of extra effort, given what it provides the town. So in fact, what I, what I wanted to point out, that the coolest aspect for me about serving on the planning board is when good things happen, and most of the time, good things happen. Meaning that the majority of the time, things end with the extended team working together and collaborating, and the development being a win-win development. Meaning that the developer gets a better house than he came in with because of all the, all the teamwork. And also the town gets a better development. The town is improved. So I really, really like that that's the case, and that's what we encourage, is extended team working, ending up with a win-win resolution. Okay, enough of that acknowledgement. Let's go forward. So I'm excited to serve and appreciative of the support and trust of the members. I'm looking forward to working with other boards and committees in new ways, and that's already starting to happen. And we want to continue and expand our success under, under Al's leadership. I'm not sure why there's a basketball player on the, on the right-hand side. Someone added that. Actually, I, I kinda fancy myself a basketball player, and the point that I wanted to make is generally I'm a shooting guard when I'm on the court. But I think in this case, given my limitations and given others' abilities, I'll tend to be more of a point guard, and I'll do a lot of passing rather than shooting. So let's get into priority. I'll get, let's get into priorities. I have a couple priorities, and then we'll get into some fun granular stuff, I think. Our number two problem, start with number two. We have some strategic initiatives that we've been really excited about. There's really good things happening, I think, in 40B management despite the challenges. EMI and other people around town are doing some really good work studying water conservation and coming up with policies there. The tree bylaw is coming up from the TAG group. I think Nina and her team are doing a really good job. And then we started a transportation plan to try to identify what, if anything, can Weston do to mitigate the traffic and the congestion that we experience every day. So those things are off and running, and if you have any questions about them, you know, see us after the meeting, and we can talk about that. To be determined, you know, there's other things under consideration that I think are really interesting for us. It turns out that more and more, as we look at these permits, the issue of coal herts comes up, right? So they're, and I think it would be a good idea for, and I've talked to the DPW about this, for them to come in and talk to us a little bit about the coal herd situation. Not that we are in a position to do anything about it, but it'd be, we get so many questions about it. It'd be nice to be able to answer questions and provide guidance back to DPW about what we're hearing. So that's something that we're considering. I think Leslie's chomping at the bit to make improvements to the regulations, so we're looking forward. She has some great ideas to do that. And then I, I've noticed actually, as I go to town meetings, that there are a lot of articles that come up that have to do with land issues and land zoning issues. And I really, people come up and they ask me, they call me, or they email me, and they ask my recommendations or just my perspective on it, and I thought it might be nice, before town meetings, that the planning board as a whole, if we feel like articles relate to land planning or land use, that we come up with an opinion and a recommendation on it. So that's just something to think about. Because I'm also nervous when I'm at town meeting, we'll be called upon, and then we haven't deliberated on it, we don't have an opinion. So that seems silly too. So I think for the sake of the town, I think we can provide some value there. Okay, so the, but the immediate, the top priority for, for me, for sure today, is to try to streamline the permitting and meeting process, the kind of thing that we're in today. And when I say immediate, as in, we're gonna talk about some things right now, and this is what we'll conclude with. So I have a list of about 10 suggested improvements on how we run these meetings, especially the permitting meetings, and I'm gonna walk through them right now, and there's no need to applaud every one of them.
Sit on our hands.
Hold your, hold your applause till the end.
Maybe, to streamline, maybe we should have a separate process meeting sometime, a posted process meeting.
So I'm gonna, right now, I'm just gonna finish this. Let me finish.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, I'm looking at the number of people here and looking...
That's not, not, I, I'm really interested in the camera, because a lot of people watch.
The camera will be out, so another posted meeting as well.
Okay, I'm gonna finish. Okay, so the starter ideas for streamlining include avoid late night meetings. That's, that's been an issue for us, going a little bit too late, and then what happens at the end, I think people lose their attention.
The lights go out.
And the lights go out. So my suggestion is that we start at 7:00 PM, and I think Steve's schedule would be easier if we moved our meetings to Thursday, if we moved to seven, and therefore we can end by 9:30 or earlier. So, that's one suggestion. The second is a simple checklist for permits. So houses and camps. There's a lot of repetition, a lot of obvious questions we have to ask. Sometimes we ask the questions twice, sometimes three times. It'd be nice if we were handed a simple checklist from Dana or from EMI at the beginning of the meeting, so we didn't have to go through that. That saves a lot of time. Thirdly, I want to adjust or consider adjusting our hearing sequence. So when an applicant comes before us, I'd like to first have the applicant present. I'd like to have the consultants comment. Then I'd like to have the planning board question the applicant and the consultants on what they presented. Then I'd like to give residents a chance with questions and comments. And then after hearing all that, I'd like the planning board then to issue their comments. A lot of times I feel like the answer is, should be, is in Kim's mind, for example, right? And we're deliberating, we're deliberating, we're asking questions, and if we could just go to Kim on landscaping. She had it figured out from the beginning, so I'd like to get to the consultants a little bit earlier. I'd like to have stricter time to our sessions, right? So when we have a hearing, I'd like to have 20 minutes on the applicant presenting. We generally say, "Oh, the whole thing should take 20 minutes," but then it might take an hour. So the way I think we can limit it is say, "The applicant actually has 20 minutes, and they're pretty much uninterrupted." Let them, and, and also, we stay on topic, and when we hear comments, a lot of times we hear repeated comments. And I don't want to shut people down, so I want to allow them to concur, but I don't, I think it'd be a best use of everybody's time if we didn't hear the same comment again and again and again, so that can happen. Next, I think we could do a little bit better job with EMI in, to scale the estimated time per project complexity. And then if we don't meet that deadline, then we can continue, if needed, to meet the stop time. This, this requires a little bit more work on our part. I want to individually review draft decisions before the meeting. And so we arrive with notes and can comment and collaborate amongst ourselves, but we don't have to have time to, we don't have to take the time to do live reading in front of the audience. Here's one for the audience. I've, I think we've been disappointed at times in the viewability of materials for the audience. the audience. You know, if, if we say, and it's true, that the audience and neighbors are the number one priority, we need to make sure that they get to view, including ahead of time, the materials that they're here to see. So we need to think about how to do that. And I think, and the recorded session as well. So I don't think we have all the answers to that, but I, I think the one thing it would require Dana and EMI is to make sure we get the materials upfront. Sometimes the materials are delivered last second, so maybe we just have to be more strict about that. Okay, moving to site visits. We encounter a lot of traffic on our way to site visits at 8:00 AM, so what I propose is to move site visits to 10:00 AM. We can avoid the traffic, move them to Wednesdays, for my sake, in that case. And then I don't think all the members need to attend every site visit. I think we have a quorum there, but I think we can rotate that, and EMI can take charge of rotating that. Okay, so that's it, basically, for the recommendations, but I wanted to, you know, extend ourselves a little bit, you know, into the, into the resident realm, and I wanted to encourage residents to give us further ideas, you know, on how to streamline this process. So we've opened up an email address called pbfeedback@western.org, and we're open to any ideas from residents on improving any planning process to make it more likely that they'll participate, and they'll, participation will end up as a positive thing. And then EMI and I will review that monthly, and good ideas that we think are worth considering, we'll bring to the planning board. And also, I'll ask, believe it or not, at least I and Alicia are engaging on the Facebook page, and then we're piloting it. And I, I know that, you know, it can be good and it could be bad, as in any social media, but we're trying to see if we can listen and help and learn. And I've asked our, our council for guidance on actually what kind of participation you should get from the planning board. So the first recommendation is, of course, no commenting on specific permits that are before you. But I'll have a list, Alicia, of other recommendations from council there, too.
And exactly which Facebook page is it?
It's the community page, Weston Community Page on Facebook. So you could join, and you could watch if you want, too. And you can just.
Weston Mass.
What's that?
It's Weston Mass.
Okay, Weston Mass.
I want to comment on Weston, Connecticut.
Right.
They may not buy your.
So that's my update, and again, I'm appreciative of the vote and trust to be chairman. So any, any feedback on, just for, let's take five minutes of feedback on the ideas for streamlining from the board, and then I'll go to the audience.
I'm a little nervous, I don't have swan off for our Facebook.
Okay, gotcha.
Don't go on it.
Yeah, right, that's fair. So I, I consider it a pilot, to see how we do. And if it goes in a bad direction, then we say, maybe not. I agree.
I think they're all great ideas, but I'm reluctant to get on Facebook much.
Yes, right.
But I'm not.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily encouraging you, I'm just saying, Alicia and I are going to try it and see what happens.
Well, I wasn't doing it as an official, first, I mean, planning person, I was doing it as Alicia's primary citizen.
Yeah. And we'll ask you a planning board question.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any feedback?
I like it, I think we probably have more to add to it.
Okay.
And I think, I like the idea of everybody being invited to the walkthroughs, because for me, it's very helpful to see the actual site.
Yes.
And then if EMI can make sure that the quorum maybe rotates.
Right, right. So everyone will be invited, I didn't want to just, people attending, it's just that it's, a quorum is required.
And I think, can I, it's much more civilized.
Yeah, right.
A quorum is required?
Yeah, I assume it'd be great for Kim. Kim?
Tony, is that, you said that quorum is required at sidewalks?
No, quorum isn't required. We'll encourage a quorum at the sidewalk, yeah, exactly. Is a 10:00 AM start, Kim, to sidewalks better for you? It's worse for you? We'll talk about that offline.
Yeah.
Okay, you talked to EMI about it already?
I did.
Okay, gotcha.
And I still think it might be helpful, after a little time goes by, that we have a meeting where it's not chock full of things that we could, where we could discuss process issues.
Sure, 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 this is just getting it off, getting it off the ground. I agree.
But we've already unstreamlined our meetings, so that's why I'm concerned about that.
Okay, audience.
So, if you want to turn back to the first one?
Sure.
So, so for, for site plan review on scenic roads for new residential, you didn't know this one?
Yes, yes.
So.
Okay, I don't, I really don't want to get into the details of this, that's okay. I really wanted feedback on the streamlining, that's what I'm asking for now, and I don't want to get into the.
Well, that doesn't, I mean, maybe the rules are changing, but I think that you have more purview over scenic roads than just new houses being built, and not so that I was looking for.
Additions, additions and new homes.
That's not mentioned there, so I'm just clarifying, because it seems kind of.
That's correct, I mean, if it's greater than 6,000 square feet or 10% of the lot, we have purview over it.
But what about if you remove a certain amount of the roofline, or, I mean, it's, you have purview over the additions.
That's the addition, that's addition, it's not new home.
So that's what I was, that's not mentioned there, so I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, so let, let me focus just right now on streamline, any feedback on the streamlining ideas, that's really what I'm interested in right now. Paul?
I, I just suggest, I think it's a good idea for you to have a mission statement, and I'm surprised you haven't had one already. I would take the following issue with it. You mentioned one portion of our town character, which was semi-rural, quote unquote. There are other aspects of the town character also, which I think that your mission statement should have you protect and defend in some, one way or another. And I don't want to go through all of them, because I'm not sure that we understand or would agree to all of them.
Right, right.
But we're facing this with, and we're going to have to.
So I think it would be fun for you and Sue and I to work through that.
I'd be happy to help volunteer Sue. I'd be happy to help, so if I can.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments on the streamlining ideas? Okay. Thanks for your attention to that, appreciate it.
Thank you, Tony.
So now, I think we have, we're moving to an A and R.
Yeah, Jonathan.
Jonathan?
Come up here.
We just have one more administrative task, and then we'll move on to the public hearing.
Yeah. Yeah, EMI approved it. Okay. Do you just need one signature?
Well, we need all, but I'll just witness one.
Okay. You want me to sign two pieces of paper, or one?
Hey, EMI said he wants two, one for you, four for us. One to get recorded.
Can you share the address?
The address is 98 Love Lane.
Does the new lot have an address?
What's that?
Does the new lot?
We should probably read what it's.
Relates with one of the lots for sale.
And who did this come from, from Jonathan or from EMI?
I worked off the town's form, which EMI asked me to fill out, and we filled it out, and he brought it back, and he approved it.
Can you sign a document to that effect?
Just kidding.
All right, I have a question, avoid me saying until 10:00 PM, I don't have some.
The documents didn't come in. The documents, please, the documents didn't come in, for the A and R later?
No, no, this is, we've got a, Dana knows, since we have a blast.
Yeah, town planner report is a blasting, but I think we still have to talk to fire about that before.
We haven't talked to fire yet.
We have a meeting tomorrow.
So we won't get to it tonight, but I won't hang around to sign that out.
Okay.
I'm going to listen, I would do.
As much as I love being here.
We all do.
We need an air conditioner, though.
Do you want to know?
Yeah, I'll, we won't get, stay up till tomorrow, since my seal is still at the office. Who wants, who wants me to, who wants to say they signed it freely and voluntarily? I did. We have two.
Thank you, thank Jonathan.
Okay, let's move on to the public hearing for 10 Alphabet Lane, a special camp, special permit for camp, Be Ahead of the Game.
Should I come forward, or?
Yeah, by all means. Do we have the documentation?
Yeah, boy.
Yeah, right. They've got a first checklist.
Have you signed this?
See on the scale.
Where did we put our very first checklist?
Yes, a document the board is reviewing, this.
Okay, you can identify yourself.
Sure, my name is Brian Kelly, I'm the owner, operator of Be Ahead of the Game LLC. I've been operating camps and classes for the rec center in Weston for, I'd say, 15, almost close to 20 years now. And with the new regular camp regulations, Massachusetts, I've been doing, I've been running a soccer camp in conjunction with Weston Rec for the past 12 to 15 years, in this exact spot, doing the same exact thing. And just due to the new camp regulations and such, we have to apply for our own health permit this year, so hence, that's why I'm here, and happy to answer any questions about the camp itself, or what we do, or what we're looking for, and so on, so forth.
So, this is a new, yours, you've done, this is the first time you're doing this in town?
It's the first time we've had to have our own health permit from the Board of Health. Usually, we just tack on with Weston Rec and run up three or four-day clinic with them, but I haven't done that for 12 to 15 years, I don't know the exact date. So this year, it will take place, or hoping to take place at the same spot, which is, we use the Woodland School. We actually call it the Woodland Mini Field, which is in between the Memorial Pool and the Woodland School itself, right where that arrow is pointing. And we average maybe 20, 30 kids per four, four-day session that we host over the summer. So it's very low-key, very.
There's no other camps going on?
There's no, ah, that's why Lauren, that's why the rec lets me run it, is because they're not doing their camps at the same.
So you've done, and this number has stayed fairly steady for the number of years you've done this?
I don't think I've ever had more than 35 kids a week, and it's pretty, the average is in twos.
So we can't, have to be in the decision, we have to sort of name a number, and is this?
Do you want to say a max, 30?
Three years, five years?
Do you want to, how long do you plan to run the camp? 20 years?
For.
For 20? So have we been doing three or five years?
For the first time, we've been doing it three years, and then they just come in and say, that's it, it gives you the option to say.
And they can bump up by 50% if they wish, without coming back to us.
So, I mean, I'll cap it at 40, if that makes sense to you, or, just so I don't.
So I don't have to come back.
How old are the kids?
We, we have two sessions, we do nine, nine to, 9:00 AM to 12 noon, for, for ages four to seven, and then we do a nine to three option for ages up to 12, seven to 12. And we follow all the regulations of, you know, ratios one to five for kids under five and six, and one to 10 for, so.
And you use the nets and all that on school?
Correct, or, and we have all our own stuff as well, it's on, there's been many times where.
You guys are talking to them, though?
Correct, exactly. There's been many times where the field, we come on, they're doing something in the field in the morning, so we.
In practice, in somewhere else.
Exactly. So we've been through, we've been through many days, someone's.
Right.
Okay.
When is this global premiere?
I believe that's the next one.
Oh, yeah, and that's actually, we'll talk about it.
You can't answer that.
Everybody.
We're just interested in how do children arrive?
Oh, so see where, I can point to you real quick, with that, that red arrow, where it's pointing. I sent it to Dana, and I think I just got a little bit mixed up. I'm happy to have the drop-off point here, which is the parking lot of the Memorial Pool. Usually, we just have them pull up right here, I'm sorry, we just have them pull up right here, and there's a little pullover, and the kids, we have the coaches meet the kids, and we block them right here where we put the backpacks. So the difference of, I'd say, 35 yards.
Mostly, we're just in congestion and traffic, so, so these are individual parents dropping up, you don't have plus, and mostly, these kids obviously come from surrounding the mountains?
They mostly are all from, mostly all from Weston, and a couple from Wayland, which is where I live, and I have kids friends, and so on, so forth. Nothing is going on at Woodland School, so typically, they pull up to the right, they pull over, we, we sign in, they go up and do that little U-turn, they come back, they wave, they steal it, it couldn't be any easier, simply.
Any other questions?
Yep.
Okay. I think we're all set. Any, any questions from the audience? Great. So we think.
That's our decision.
It's an approval.
Three years or five?
This, we said three years.
Three years, come back for one second, and redo for five.
Right. And did I hear the number of campers just increased somehow from 20?
To cap it at 40?
Just, I just didn't know if it was.
Right.
I'm not.
So you're filing for 20, and it could go up to 30 without coming back? Do you want to cap it at 40?
Let's cap it at 40.
Okay, gotcha.
That way, no issues.
From 20 to 30.
I'll never have one.
Okay, got it.
And of course, the staff ratio increases, excuse me.
Not a problem, though.
So we'll have a decision?
June 5th.
June 5th.
And good enough?
You don't need to return, no?
You need it earlier than that. Well, your camp doesn't start until 20.
Yeah.
You should be good, right? Yeah. You're fine, it's fine.
Yeah, I'll let you know when you get it, period.
We'll give you a verbal, you need to.
Yeah, I'll tell you the details later.
Much appreciated.
Thanks, appreciate it. Next, 10 Alphabet Lane, another special permit for camp, Global Premier Soccer.
And you have another major camp?
Sure do.
Yeah.
Does that help, does she?
Yes, I just added some suggestions.
Yeah.
And he's giving, Tony's giving.
Is the applicant?
Yes.
Just identify yourself, and talk a little bit about your camp, it'd be great.
My name is Ty Helsch, I work in the qualification programs at Woodland Soccer. I run basically all licensing, I go for all of our help, and planning boards in all the towns, last year, we ran 16 different towns, but places for all, and plumbed it for all our soccer camps over the summer. We also run camps throughout the year for the qualification days. Companies originally founded based on camps from the two owners back in 2001, when they came to the United States. They were running camps back then, so it's still, we're still very proud of the camps business, because we've been running it ever since then, and the two owners always get involved with it, too, because that's how they started. And so, we work with Weston New Soccer organization, we moist the director of coaching right there. We work together with him to help run our camp, and just organize. Right now, we have a program with him, too, throughout the season, having GPS coaches at Weston New Soccer, so we have a relationship with them. And so we look to, last year, we didn't run anything in Weston, because we were a little late for the permitting, but this year, we're early, so we're hoping to run again.
Nice goal, right? And the transportation plans, where you going to drop the kids off?
Yes, so.
Yeah, same. We're very familiar with the location.
Yes, so basically, when they, when you drive down Alphabet Lane, right where the field entrance is, there's, there's parking spots right on, on the hill, going down, and your parents can park, and drop the kids off, and the coaches outside.
What's the age that it gets?
Um, from five to.
Five to.
Five.
I'm sorry?
Five to 14.
Oh, five to 14, that's.
And they all play together?
No, we're all going to, depending on the time, that's right.
I see.
So for the. Yes, so basically, when they, when you drive down Alphabet Lane, right, right where the field entrance is, there's, there's parking spots right on, on the hill down, going down. And your parents can park, and drop the kids off, and the coaches outside.
What's the age of the kid?
Um, from five to-
Oh, we got it, yeah.
Got it.
I'm sorry?
Five to fourteen.
Oh, five to fourteen, that's cool.
Do they all play together?
No, we're all going to, depending on the time, that's right.
I see. And you said you didn't have it in Weston last year, had you had it in Weston before?
Yes, we've had, but before, we didn't need to have licensing for it.
Okay.
Because the regulations changed now.
Okay, got it. Okay.
That's at the bottom of the hill, right?
Yes, right at the field.
So that's a little, that's a little dicey to be dropping.
But that's where they always drop off.
Is that where they drop?
Soccer, spend a lot of time in that spot.
Yeah, right.
It's true.
That's where they drop off spot. And that's where it's filmed on?
That's where it is, yeah, that's the spot. Because that's where the entrance to the field is. So we'll be busy at this time of day. We have two camps coming and dropping off.
Right, same day?
No, we're taking, right, it's only one, there's one overlap, yeah.
How does it overlap with the town camp? Drop off and pick up.
Yeah.
It's different fields.
Andings?
There's no issue with overlapping.
What was that? Town camp, I think, drop off at Woodland. And town camp. Woodland School.
Yeah, that's Woodland School.
Where's the drop off?
Raybridge shows.
Same place.
Is the town camp up at the pool?
I think the town camp drop off is at Woodland.
Oh, like in a soccer camp from the one we just did this year?
Yes, actual Westin Town Recreation.
Okay, I don't, I don't have any permits from that, I can see any camp.
It's at Woodland.
Town camp doesn't have a permit.
But it seems like it could be some- Seems like there could be some potential traffic conflicts with these other camps, that at least we should see on the town camp. When the, you know, pick up and drop off jobs are. That's probably the most popular one in town.
Because it's a large program.
Yeah.
And in the past, could you just say that, that the perm was necessary because it was sort of all under the supervision of the Weston Rec Department, or their town? Because we said, that you may just do that.
Right, right, because that's how they get their approvals, and why they have to, so they don't get it from us.
Yeah, they're not subject to-
Yes, exactly.
Not our jurisdiction. Okay, any other questions? Comments? From the audience? I think you were set.
Do we need a maximum number of campers? We're going to assume it's-
We didn't run last year, so it's kind of an estimate, but we don't expect more than fifty. So we're hoping in the forty range, that's what we did the years before, that range, so.
And would this be the three year permit? Because it's the first time we've permitted them, and-
Okay.
Thank you.
And you'll have your decision?
June fifth.
June fifth, right. Thank you. Another camp. Ten Farm Road Special Permit Camp, Meadowbrook Day Camp. Hi.
Yeah.
Identify yourself, just tell us a little bit about the camp.
Sure, my name is Dan Hammer.
I'm Jordan Metlin.
I know. We're representing the Meadowbrook Summer Programs, which consists of Meadowbrook Day Camp and the Aismakers Camp at Meadowbrook. Which are fully owned by the Meadowbrook School. So we're here to request a renewal for a five year permit again, this year. We originally came before the Board in two thousand and two, to get our first kind of work permit. And we've been able to renew it, renewed since. We've been in operation since nineteen fifty. And I have been director, at least in the Meadowbrook Day Camp, since nineteen ninety-seven. So, then we brought on Aismakers in two thousand and ten.
Yep. And you've been there since, and I, before we were at Meadowbrook, we were in at Dan Hall.
What do you do with camps, you mail all the kids?
Well, the camp, for the, for the day camp, we begin at two and a half years old, is our youngest camper. And we have a teen adventure program, which will go to about fifteen.
Seven to fourteen.
Seven to fourteen.
Adventure program?
Mm-hmm.
What do the younger kids do?
The younger kids do a general day camp program, including swimming, arts and crafts, sports. I would consider a traditional day camp.
Okay. Okay, you mean about the camps? Okay, got it. And the, the numbers haven't changed, the number of campers and the number of staff?
The numbers, the number, the numbers have not, yes. So we wanted to go for an average daily attendance of four hundred, we're really not there, and have not been there for a number of years. And then, you know, we're happy to keep, you know, the staff numbers to a hundred, under a hundred and fifty, which is easily, very simple for us to do. And also, there's a number of the other parameters, we're happy to do regard to keeping noise and knowing and deliveries down between seven a.m. and seven p.m. And, and prohibiting amplified sound and amplified voice. I can do that, it's been part of our program now for years and years and years. And, and also keeping our ridership goals with the planning board for our, for busing.
Buses.
For our busing.
That's the transportation?
Yeah.
Can you talk a little bit about that? How are the kids brought in?
Kids are brought in two ways. We have anywhere between about, depending on the session, we'll have between about eighty to eighty, almost ninety percent kids coming in on school buses.
From where?
They're coming in from, they're coming in from Newton. Yeah, they're coming from Newton, they're coming from Weston, we have stops in Weston, Wellesley.
Oh, so you do pickups, okay.
We do pickups, right, right.
Oh, so you do come and go.
Right, so we even go as far as need them, if we need them, we'll pick up. But the campus of the Meadowbrook School, we have it, we have it split up, where we bring our school buses into the front of the, into the front of the school. We have two circles, we have the front circle, we bring the school buses. And then our, our single ridership cars come in, in a back circle here, so we split them up here. Over the, over the years, since we've been permitted with you, we've had a pretty dramatic decrease in, in single occupancy vehicles.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, very, yeah.
Just for our transportation?
Yeah, yeah, you know, and so, our, our car line, what we call is the car line, is really rather short and rather quick now, because we have so many campers on school buses. We'll, we'll have, I expect to have six school buses this year, that will walk the surrounding towns and, and Weston.
Any other questions, Steve?
Being that it's our five year, being that it's our five year, we'll hopefully get in five years.
Yes.
There's a couple requests that we, we're hoping that we can make amendments to our permit.
Sure.
The first one is that, one of the things that we're prohibited to do, is that the Meadowbrook School during the summer, during the operation of camps, is by our permit, is prohibited to do any renting out of any facility. And so we were hoping to request that we not have that put, that prohibition put into our permit this time, for these five years. The other-
Say that again.
Yeah, we are not permitted to, you know, rent out our gyms, or rent out our, or have a family have a birthday party in a pool, that it might be a school family. We're, we're not permitted to do that anymore. And we're hoping that we, we would be able to do that now.
What do you want to do, for example, that you didn't do before, or like-
Well, we don't have anything specif-, we don't have anything specific that we're thinking about. It's just a prohibition that if we could have groups that could possibly use it, if we could, if we could have that permitted. There's nothing, there's nothing specific.
Just for the purpose of this camp?
Right.
Just for the purpose of this camp?
Or you're saying for the school?
No, you're-
Yeah.
You want the school to be able to rent it, right?
Yes, yes.
That's different.
Year round?
That's a whole different story. Because probably I'll have to talk about, because that could be, impact the neighborhood greatly, you're suddenly going to have much more sound and activity.
Just let me, I was asking a question. So, the, you're saying, the school for general purposes, or just for this camp? That's what I was trying to get at.
Really, just for general purposes.
Okay, so this doesn't have to do anything with this camp permit?
So you're saying year round?
During the summer?
No, just, just for, I mean, we do do it year round, it's just that we had the prohibition in our permit, so we never, we never did it during the summer. And we would like to have, we would like to be able to have a renter come out and use our gyms and things of that sort.
So that's beyond this hearing? Is that okay to say?
Okay.
Okay, because we really want to focus on this camp permit.
Right.
But you can, if we have that request, we can schedule a meeting and talk about that. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Great, yeah.
One of the other, one of the other requests that I have, is that in our present two four, two thousand and fourteen permit, we have a, a prohibition of having activities expand past seven o'clock. Which we've been in adherence to for, since two thousand and two. We were hoping to have that lifted also. And specifically, what we're thinking about is, we're thinking about having two family, like picnic type things, but we'd probably get it over somewhere close to seven thirty, or seven forty-five. I don't expect, because we have school age children, and some of them are really quite young, that we would have anything really going to eight o'clock at night. But we were just hoping that we could extend that beyond seven o'clock for a couple, for a couple of nights.
Are there light, there's no need for light?
No need for light, no, no, no.
That's the kind of thing that could be disruptive, you know, it's, we really need to find the exact dates, and exactly the time you would be ending. You can't just have it open ended like, you know, where we-
And I could, and I could, I could provide you that.
That sounds like something that would be applicable to have a neighborhood hearing, public hearing on those changes, because that would really, that's a big- Both of the two things you've said so far would potentially impact the neighborhood greatly, and they would have an interest in that, changing that permit.
The third, the third one we were hoping to request, was that each October, we submit a report on our bus registration. And we were hoping, and since we've done that, we have been able to stay within our, our requested percentages of students or others, campers on, on school buses. And to decrease the number of single rider occupancy vehicles. So we were just hoping that, we were requesting that we could inform you that we did attain our goals as per the permit, certify that we did attain our goals as per our permit. Rather than providing you with a detailed recording each, each ball.
Oh, so just less paperwork, I understand.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But you still have to do the same calculations to determine that information.
We do.
So they won't have to provide us with that information. If you have to calculate it anyway, you're not sending yourself anything.
Well, what we, it's, it's really rather simple to calculate, because we know from year to year, how many kids we have on the buses.
What's on, what's on earth about it? I'm trying to understand.
It's just, it, it is just a, it's just a clerical, it's very time consuming clerical wise.
But you can't just like make copies, tape it, like give it to them?
Well, yeah, it just, it just takes a while. And since we are so within, within our, our, our goals.
I, I don't have a major objection to this.
Why, why don't we take a look and see what we normally get, and see if we really need them, uh, detailed, because probably we don't. But let's take a look at what you gave us before.
Sure.
And let's see what everybody else gives us too, yes?
I have a copy of it.
Why don't you bring it, yeah? Does anybody look at it?
I have an old video.
And I give that to you every October.
But that sounds like something beyond the camp permit.
This is total transportation, so we're at the Meadowbrook School.
Yeah.
Well, no, this is total transportation for just the, just the summer program.
Just the summer program.
Maybe we need to continue.
Yeah, so, I, I'd like to, Ema is not here, and I'd like to understand what Ema does with this. So it's hard for me to say, we don't need that. Is that okay?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, great.
You need this back?
Go.
But if, if you want to come back one night and talk about that more, and you can get it, it would be mine.
Okay.
Okay, so this seven to seven thirty request, there's a neighbor that had a handout, is that right?
Yeah, I was just, maybe this isn't the appropriate venue, but, you know, printed out, if you all wrote about a lot of the rental and Meadowbrook School property outside groups. As a buddy neighbor, I, I don't know what you all have in mind.
Yeah, so we're not talking about that, that's not on the table.
Does that end up back with you, or with a different group in Weston?
I mean, if they bring it to someone?
If they bring it to someone, who do they bring it?
Who do they bring that to?
Oh, it's us. Amendment.
Amendment to the special permit, so we're figuring it would be us, if they want to come back. And you would be, if you were a neighbor, you would be noticed on the matter.
Okay.
You'd be told that there'd be a hearing on that. So now we're down to the seven thirty thing, right? And how are folks feeling about that here? Does a neighbor have a comment on that seven thirty?
No, I got a notification, the reason I came is because I thought that's what you were talking about tonight.
Okay, got it. Anybody have a strong opinion on the seven thirty?
Repeat again exactly what it is you want to do.
Yeah, let's have a picnic, and last it until seven thirty.
Yeah, we're thinking.
One night?
We think about two.
Two nights?
Because we run, we have the two.
Opinions on what two nights would be?
Yeah, that was more for the other ones, but, yeah, actually, it would be-
Okay, let me think of the day. Definitely a Thursday night.
You know the day.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm-
And it would either be, speaking for main speakers, it would either be the, the third Thursday of July, or the third Thursday of August.
So, and that would pretty much go from year to year.
Exactly.
It's so, that the Thursday of the first session and the second session, you'd be having a picnic that would extend until seven thirty. That doesn't seem to be-
From seven till seven thirty, so that would be the half, thirty minutes extra.
Be fair and fair.
That doesn't-
It's just reasonable.
Understood.
That's fine, that's fine.
There's a question in that?
What if there's a rain date, what if it rained?
What do you mean, for you?
I don't know.
I don't think we would be able to, we would, we would have to move it inside, we would have to move it inside, we don't have the flexibility-
Maybe they can't, or-
Well, no, we move it inside, we would, yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Eat in the cars. The bus, well, okay. Settled then, on the three items?
Yes.
So we're going to wait on Ema on the third, the first, we say, if you're really interested in that, that's a different hearing.
Thank you.
And this, seven thirty seems fine.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions here? Okay.
Would the date so noted, to that of the year? Or is it something?
Okay, we're, she's saying, and I agree, and I think we all do agree, that the seven thirty night is a date so noted.
Okay.
And we made that into a decision.
Two dates, two dates. Yeah, two dates, thirty minutes each.
Third Thursday.
Right.
Thirty minutes, thirty minutes.
It's an hour total. Isn't it worth your time here?
Sure.
Uh, I'm going to key you to tell them, watch it as a checkmark. Thanks, appreciate it. So decision?
June fifth.
June fifth. Okay. We got the trifecta of those done, and we got a fourth. One Hundred Brown Street, Special Permit Private Club, Whiteman Tennis Center Summer Membership.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
That's great.
I'm Paul Roberts, I'm the Vice President Legal of the Hazel Hotchkiss Whiteman Tennis Center. With me this evening is George Rebecca, our President, and Corey Grimes, our General Manager. We're here this evening on the application of the Whiteman Tennis Center Site Plan Approval. This is not the usual Site Plan Approval application, we're not building anything, we're not altering any use. We're here as a necessary prerequisite under Section eleven A of the Bylaws for amendment of our special permit. I believe for the actual amendment, we need to be before the Board of Appeals, but tonight, we're here with you. The special permit under which we operate our club was originally granted in nineteen sixty-eight. It limits the membership to three hundred families. In recent years, we found that more and more of our members have second homes to which they go for summer, all of the summer, or spend their summer traveling abroad, or, and often ship their children off to summer camp. Our club has become a significantly underutilized facility, which is unfortunate for several reasons. First, it makes it more difficult for the pros to organize club teams and tournaments. Second, it reduces the opportunities for these tennis pros to earn a living, consistent with their expectations. Make it more difficult for us to recruit and retain their services. I let, we have two pros that have left just within the last two months. And third, without the customers to support our cafe operation in the summer, we're forced to subsidize the cafe operator. So we'll be asking the Board of Appeals to allow us to add a new category of fifty summer memberships for June, July, and August. Our waiting list generally varies between twenty-five and sixty families, and it would be the folks on that waiting list to whom we would first offer a summer membership. It would give those families a chance to make sure that our club was right for them, and give us a chance to get acquainted with them as well. I would be less than candid if I didn't also say that we view such summer memberships as an opportunity to raise some much needed cash. Our club is an aging facility, in need of constant repairs and maintenance. We do not regularly contribute to any capital reserve fund, preferring to keep dues as low as possible for the current membership. While not yet determined by our Board of Governors, I anticipate the charge to summer members would simply be a pro rata portion of the dues that all of the rest of us pay for a full year. We would hope that our summer members would book time with our pros and eat at our cafe. Let me say some further things about our unused capacity. The number of members signing in and out at our front desk on a typical summer day is a fraction of the numbers during the remainder of the year. In a few moments, we'll show you a chart that will provide a clearer picture. And many of the folks who do arrive in the summer are bound to the pool, often with their young children. The tennis courts sit in the hot summer sun, many of them empty, waiting for players. I'm aware that one of the main concerns of this Board is the impact on traffic that our request might have. Again, we'll show you graphically how the impact during the peak traffic hours will be minimal. And adequate parking has never been an issue for us. We have a hundred and two parking spaces, four of which are handicap spots. I'm going to ask Mr. Rebecca to take you through the brief PowerPoint presentation that includes some of the numbers that I hopefully anticipate some of your questions.
I just need to ask you a question before we-
Sir?
So you're asking for something of us and something different from the ZBA, is that right?
It's my understanding that the special permit which we hold, which was issued by the ZBA-
Right.
Can only be amended by the ZBA. can only be amended by the ZBA.
Okay, so then, so why are you here?
If that's incorrect, I'd be happy to learn.
So now I'm asking, why are you here? I just don't know.
We were at Site Plan, under the section of the bylaws to which I refer, eleven A.
Right.
A Site Plan Approval is a necessary prerequisite for amendment of the special permit.
Okay, gotcha.
Correct.
This is your first two steps?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Okay. Is there?
Did you want to give him the clicker?
Come again?
The clicker? Can you give him that?
Oh, you want the clicker, yeah. So Dan, can you offer that? Can you confirm what you're saying?
Um, I don't know this one, but you might have to do it.
Yeah, Imai was.
Imai, you. So it's a first, a two-step process?
Correct. So I'm George Rebecca, running, that's the, the, the White.
Right.
And, uh, so just, just give you a picture of the club.
Oh, yeah, I can go back. If you just press the right and left button.
Yep, I got it, I got it. So first, this is where we're located, uh, which is, maybe at the end of South, we're on Round Street. And, uh, so we're out South Street. Is everyone aware of that? Yes, okay. So this is a picture of the outdoor tennis courts used during the summer. They have some decorative, um, things. This is the waiting pool for little kids. Someone taking a dive off the pool, diving board?
Not today.
Not today, no, not for a while, I'm afraid. And so, uh, the goal here is to enable the non-member families to use the club during the summer. Give the summer memberships to fifty maximum and give waitlisted families a priority. We currently have three hundred member families. Uh, that's the max we can have. Twelve outdoor courts, four indoor courts, fitness center, indoor and outdoor pools, ninety-eight parking spaces plus four handicap spaces. And it's, as Paul has mentioned, it's severely underutilized during the summer months. During the summer, well, this is check-in data, so this is the number of people who checked in to the club. It was not the number that were there necessarily, it was the number who checked in. And then you can see the averages and pick some, with Imai, um, he suggested take the early rush hour and then later time at four to six P M, but then we plugged in the other dates, the other times also. As you can see, it's hardly, hardly used. So our waitlist comes about because we go through a vetting process and it's about two and a half to three years because it really depends upon someone leaving before a new person can commit. So we have people on our waiting list who like to use it during the summer, certainly these are young families often, and they have to wait. And it's great interest for other local families to kind of try out the club and get on the waitlist.
Do you have a way of showing that the traffic's gonna be no worse with this in the summer than it is in the winter? Do you have a way of explaining that? That would be interesting.
Average number of visits on a non-summer day?
Yeah, compared to if you increased this, what the average number of visits is gonna be. It'd be interesting to see, is it gonna be less still?
Well, we don't know how many of the, first of all, we don't know how many, how many would be there.
Right.
And we don't know, I have no idea how they'd be utilized. I would assume, I mean, if you make the assumption that the incoming is the same as the current membership in terms of utilization.
Yeah.
Let's go back to these numbers. Let's, let's assume it's the same as.
It's gonna be higher.
We have it now, yeah, is it gonna double?
They're gonna be predisposed to play more.
I only think they would, because they're summer members, I think they'd come more. But is it gonna double or triple? Look at these numbers though.
Yeah, they're still, it's gonna remain far below your winter numbers is what I'm.
Oh, wait, well, see.
That's all.
The question is, what are your winter comparable numbers?
Yeah, what are your winter numbers?
I don't have a.
Okay, yeah.
We can provide that if you need.
Yeah.
The law has never failed.
The law has never failed, okay. Even in the winter.
Even in the winter.
Okay. Okay.
So our proposal is to offer people off summer memberships, that are planned between about fifty families. Currently, there are twenty-eight families under waitlist, and it varies extraordinarily, depends on how many people leave. And it's really the older people who are leaving, right?
So, that's good. Anything else?
No.
Anything from the audience?
So we understand that we're trying to.
I think we've done this before, because we have to make a recommendation, are we making a recommendation to the ZBA?
I think we have to give them a permit and they take that modified permit.
I think, yes, I think you give a Site Plan Approval permit, which then entitles us to vote before the ZBA. To get an amendment to our existing special permit.
So my, the only thing that I would like to happen before we give you that permit, is just Imai confirm my question. That the summer traffic because of this will still be no greater than the winter traffic.
Would you like us to submit the, uh, statistics?
However you do it, I'll ask Imai that question. I'll say, Imai, before you issue this.
Well, it has to be much smaller because if there are three hundred member families right now, and they're proposing, they've got fifty, so it's max, it's still way below.
It's okay, he'll, he's just gonna do it. He's just gonna do it. He's just gonna do it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, gotcha. So that decision would be?
June fifth.
June fifth.
That would be the fifth.
June fifth, they should like the day.
Thank you.
Thanks, good luck with that. Okay, now we're down to new business, eleven Bradford. So we're now, a little more sensitive.
Just color it, just in case it's easier for you.
I can pull them up as well.
Well, that's good, you'll put it up there.
You'll put it up there?
Because we really need to have a.
Yeah, we do. We always have people coming over.
So you're gonna leave them with?
And you got the.
Ben, are we starting?
Oh, you guys know where you're starting?
I was, uh.
You can go off those plants.
All right, good evening. Um, my name's Colin Han. I'm with the Blade of Grass. The landscape design that is put together a plan for the site at eleven Bradford Road, which is the resident of Stephen Laurie Fishman. Mr. Fishman is here as well, as well as our consulting civil engineer, Ryan Tim from RJ O'Callaghan. So, this is, so, uh, let's start off with the, uh, landscaping plan. Start at the front. So this hearing is for an amendment to an existing decision which allowed a three-car underground garage that you can, is it okay?
Yeah, why don't you point to it as a case?
Sure, just to give people a frame of reference.
Yeah, perfect.
Coming off King's Grant Road here, which intersects with Bradford Road, where RA approved to add in a access path to this, um, garage, which is actually built into the hillside, so that we'll be, you know, landscaping on top of it and only one side really present. We've already been approved to screen that off from King's Grant Road. What we're here tonight to talk about is, since this is an RGFA now, the rest of the landscaping that was in development post the garage. I guess I'll take you through the driveway and work our way around, and if anybody has any questions.
How are the changes you're proposing?
So, a summary of the changes is we're going to be adding some patio expansion, which is not on this, you can see just off the top of the plan here. Adding a hot tub and kitchen patio off this portion of the house here, um, a bocce court, and leveling the lawn by this retaining wall that's here. This plan is, is the old one. Since the sidewalk, we've updated the grading to no longer require this boulder wall here. And we brought some of the planting down and made that a little bit of a deeper bed that comes into the lawn area. Working through here, there's a proposal to add a generator, just because people lose power in that neighborhood quite often. And we're, I'm gonna work with Imai on the soundproofing of that. Coming through here, there's an existing retaining wall that we're taking a portion out so that we can bring the lawn through and have it more gracious of a front yard with this new garage. Closing down the views into the house with some screening from Bradford Road by bringing the plantings down. This is currently lawn here and here, so we're trying to kind of pinch that view down so that there's really less of a presence of the house to the street. Since the last hearing, we've realized that the kind of old rustic steps were not quite as safe as we thought they were, so we're proposing doing some masonry steps down to access the garage from this area. I might have forgot to mention that this, this garage is a hobby garage. Mr. Fishman and his son's built kit cars together, so this is kind of a.
One.
One. Well, maybe the second one will get more help. So that's kind of a, a synopsis of the front, except that we're going to be also adding some plantings and a low freestanding, um, built stone wall to kind of create a courtyard feel this area and a little bit of auxiliary parking area because the way the house is built, if anybody comes in as a guest, you can't leave this garage without moving the cars. So we were proposing that as well in the front. And if you could go in the back, I might be able to explain what's going on in the back a little bit more.
Come on, do you want to, I can, come spend a lot of time coloring this up. I'm looking at this going, this is so beautiful.
Yeah, don't worry about it. I got a head seam. I, I got a head seam. I can leave that behind if people want to take a look.
If you look, if you look at the table, we can.
Yeah, because it's helpful.
Yes.
To differentiate the different materials.
Okay.
Okay.
It's all black and white, but it's.
All right. So continuing on, we're gonna swing back through. Um, just orient to yourselves, this is that bocce court again and the hot tub. We're going to be taking out three large pines that are in some rough shape and one birch that is slightly diseased. Um, but other than that, we're gonna be leaving all the existing trees intact, but I'll interplanting the wooded area with some more screening. During the sidewalk, I think some of the board members saw how open the Fishmans are to this neighbor that clear cut their property. So they're very interested in some privacy, so that's why we're building up that edge. We really can't make it any deeper due to the leaching field being in this location, so we're kind of stuck with that narrow ten-foot bed. Up close to the house, this is kind of where the fun stuff is. Currently, there's a patio that's about this large there. The Fishmans like to entertain, so they were hoping that we could add some additional patio space for dining, a fish pond slash, um, water feature here to create some audible noise because one seventeen is pretty, you know, you can hear it from there. It's not so far away from Dairy Joy. Um, but also the fish are cool. And another kind of patio below to enjoy that area. And that's kind of, it's a built-in grill as well. It's sort of the gist of it. Happy day.
You're, you're all set. So Steve, our new process is already, sorry, if that's okay, we'll try it and see, see if you like it.
You have a new process.
You're, you're all set?
Um, if there's any questions?
You will have questions, I think, yeah. Kim, you're next.
Yeah, so we spent a lot of time with the sidewalk out here and, uh, really scrutinized the trees to come down. And, um, I think we all agreed that there's one deciduous tree that we're, they're gonna keep.
Mm-hmm.
Right, in that location.
Right there.
By adjusting some of the grading and getting rid of the boulder wall. The rest of the trees, the birch is in horrible shape. Got a lot of pines come down, and so I think the, the other trees that are coming down are reasonable. Um, he's made some changes to some of the understory as discussed on the sidewalk. I think it looks fine. And that's it.
Okay, great. And then we're gonna turn to the audience. Any, oh, Davey, you have any?
I'm finding the drainage.
Okay.
It, it doesn't force itself onto like any of the, any of the features that you guys enjoy, so.
Okay, gotcha.
Without my presentation, I mean, I, I did do a drainage system here that is.
Are you, are you?
I am the presenter.
You're gonna present that?
No, 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 I've been, I was just gonna quickly present it here. Yeah, it's essentially a stone trench. I know you typically see cul-de-sacs systems with more formal, um, with formal drainage structures. And, you know, I, I really am a proponent of trying to do it, uh, a little aesthetically pleasing for everybody, not have drains everywhere. So we're able to do that and tuck it into the landscape.
Can you show us where it is, Kim?
Sure. Well, yeah, Colin, you can show it.
Sure. Um, so this doesn't show the topography, but there's a large slope that comes down in this area. There's a big watershed, so they take a lot of water from the neighboring property. So we're proposing that we infiltrate that watershed in this planting bed so that we're intercepting that water before it can move off-site down slope, therefore.
So by increasing the depth of the, of the bed, you're also giving the water more time to get into perfectly and the lawn to stay ground.
The actual, the actual storage volume of that infiltration trench, without assuming any water seeping into the ground, is actually about three inches over the total new impervious surface, so just to keep, give you a sense. So, put a lot back into the ground.
Is there mulch over there? We'll still ask the other, can we go back?
Yeah, now the planning board asked.
Okay. Now, now, step one, step two. And is that mulch or, or leaf litter under the, under the shrubs or?
It'll probably be mulch to start.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, you know.
It'll take over one way or the other.
The back, you know, in a few years, it's probably gonna be mostly leaf litter.
Sure, okay.
Um, the trench is, is actually exposed stone now, so that can infiltrate, just to clarify.
Steve, did you have a question, Karen?
Yeah, maybe this is a stupid question, but where's the front door and where's the garage?
Where's the front door? This is the three-bait garage.
Oh, I see. So, so you're actually driving over that new garage to get to the garage?
The new garage is down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's an existing court. So the existing court, it's sort of this bolded.
The poche is reading like a wall instead of a.
So, the new garage is.
Here.
Here's the, here's the current space and the line is, if anybody comes in here, they can't get in.
Okay, thank you.
It's on the other side.
Yeah, there's a, there's a front and there's a back. If you flip it over, the whole board.
What we talked about at the sidewalk was implemented then?
Yes, which was the removal primarily earlier. And then, yeah, so more of a natural grade kind of.
No, I was gonna, to try to, I thank you.
Is that win-win thing going on?
Well, not only is it look there, it's gonna save you money.
Yay.
But it actually, they, they, they shot the grades in true. He has in there actually a, a, a seven minute, it's like, you can almost perfectly level. I don't have to have those boulders on, so, thank you, very good.
Yes, there's another thing, just exactly, there are nets already going off. So you've got two little ornamentals that have to be determined, just, just because I'm interested, they're actually fairly good caliber size.
They're gonna be right here. This is the family room where they hang out, so it's kind of the frame that view up those windows. So we're hoping that we could kind of go with the Fishmans to nursery and pick something really cool.
Nice, yeah.
A question?
Um, I wonder what additional exterior lighting you're adding because you're going to be increasing your entertainment space.
So we're under the lumen count, uh, there's a table. So what we're thinking is mostly for safety and footfalls on places where grades are changing. So we did, as we extended this stair casing here, we did add some lights that would be built underneath the cap so that when you're traversing that at night, that you don't have any issues. And then just various points around these patios, we have low path lighting, that's shroud of dark skies. And then a little bit of under cap lighting at the water feature.
And is the water kept, is it underwater, is it in there?
No, it's, it's, it's only under the cap, so that's above surface because you get a lot of refractive reflection.
Right, I know, exactly.
Especially with the cascade, I mean, you see that from the moon, basically.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
No neighbor comments, questions? Paul?
Yeah, I'm the adjacent neighbor who lives right up there, and you talked about all the water that I'm donating to you.
It's good for the plants.
I'm gonna capture that little well.
Yeah. Uh, I, I was at the site meeting and I, I applaud the, the fact that this committee worked very well with, with my neighbor Stephen and, and, uh, Stephen took our advice and, and I think it's ending up with a better plan because of that, so I want to thank the, uh, thank the planning board for doing that. On, on thinking of a view from my house, I believe that it will be degraded slightly due to mainly velocity of this big pine tree, which definitely should come down. I, I fully agree with that, that decision. It's a hazard right now. But the, the, uh, view from the various rooms in my house, I walked around them, will show the new construction here more than it was, and it will be, um, I believe slightly degraded. It's my belief that by inserting one or two trees up here on my property in the, in strategic locations, which I, I'd like to work with you to get the right location and the right species and the right height and so forth, that that can not only, um, be brought back to the way it is now, but actually improve it from the way it is now in terms of privacy. And I think that, uh, I'm willing to put in the money myself for these trees, which will, uh, take care of that because it will be an improvement over what the status quo is, as well as being a definite improvement over what the status quo would be without them. And I think Stephen has agreed in principle to that, and we haven't worked through the details. So assuming that that works well, um, I would like to support his, his plan.
So anything you guys agree to is a private agreement amongst yourselves and of course not included in the decision.
That's, that's correct.
That is understood.
Okay.
I think we work together.
When you buy a home, one of the things you don't get to choose is your neighbor, but I was very lucky.
Well, I, I think I've been lucky, see. I guess I got.
By a moment.
Is this other one here?
Yeah.
Could you take a moment?
Oh, sorry.
So one thing I forgot to mention that we discussed at the sidewalk is that the plantings in that particular zone, we might write a note and write in the decision that the locations would be finalized between.
Okay, lovely. Locations on this property will be finalized?
Yes.
Okay.
I just gotta add one more thing about Stephen that.
If you say something nice, you can get all the time you want.
I will. For many years, I've gone out and troubled the hydrant in front of my, uh, in front of, between our two houses, figuring that once, um, once I do that, it'll be, be a little bit easier in case I have a fire. And the fire department sometimes encourages that. I've been doing it over the years, and I tried to interest my other neighbors in helping me do that. And the other day. And the other day, earlier in November, December, I guess, I was out there shoveling away, and Stephen came over and he came out, grabbed a shovel, and he joined me, and he's the first neighbor who's ever done that, so. So please take a look at it.
We'll try. Okay, I think we're done. Is that good for you?
Thank you.
Okay, and the decision is, we still going?
Yes.
June 5th. June 5th by 17.
We're going to do it all June 5th, and if we have to, you can extend it.
So that means, so that's all vote, and at that point, he can start?
And there's a 20-day appeal period after that.
Even for an amendment?
Would you say?
I have to double-check that, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll talk to you about that.
So June 25th, he can start?
If there is a 20-day appeal period, it will be June 25th, yeah. It's not exactly, we saw.
Why don't you confirm with him? He might would have a definitive answer to that. You'll know in a couple of days. Okay, thanks, guys. Good job.
Thank you so much.
23 Laurel Road. 23 Laurel Road, is it? You think we can get done in 15 minutes? Fantastic, even better. You should be before us all the time. Go ahead, introduce yourself.
My name is Phil Jones. I'm at the Landscape and Tree Company. I'm here representing the owners of 23 Laurel Road and General Geno Vettel. They were not able to be here tonight. I'm here to review a proposal for removing a few trees and planting these mini trees and shrubs back into place. Okay, a couple of different situations here. One, right here in the front. So this is Laurel Road here. Circle Drive in front of the house right here. And right here, there is a large sugar maple that we've seen a couple of times on sidewalks that unfortunately is a beautiful tree. Unfortunately, it is being ravaged by fungus issues and is in a very strategic place next to the driveway and the walkways. And the whole center of the tree is dead, like we did on 85 Chestnut Street recently. And these sugar maples unfortunately are struggling, and this one is really struggling. So the time has come, we feel that it needs to come down from the safety standpoint, and we would propose to plant six to seven-inch caliper red maple in its place right on that location, as we discussed on the sidewalk. Okay, that's issue number one. On the southern side of the property down here, there are 21 white pine trees that we believe were planted in a row sometime maybe 50 or 60 years ago. With the exception of out near Laurel Road, there's a grouping of them out here. But there's a straight line of them that follows the property line of Marcy right here. Within those 21 trees, we have identified, and per the sidewalk, we revised this a little bit, but we have identified six of them that we feel are, have some structural problems and concerns, and many large limbs have been falling out of them and landing on the Vettel's house over here on this end. So we propose to remove six of the trees as X down in here. And in their place, oh, by the way, also, when this house was built, which I believe was 2011, 2012, there were 14 Norway spruce trees planted in that area that are now in the range of 18 to 22 feet tall. So we have the understory under pines. So we're proposing to take the six pine trees out that have the most, the structural problems and replace them with seven, and this is all on your paperwork, seven Norway spruce, 12 to 14-foot, five Western red cedar, which we would put directly between Marcy's house, which is back over here. So we would put a grouping of them right in here to gain the maximum screening to her house, 16 to 18 feet. And then per our last site walk, we would also add sustainable landscape of maybe two dogwoods, three amalanchia, and a dozen shrubs, viburnum, witch hazel, plethora, sustainable-type plantings. So we're looking at putting 12 large evergreen trees, five deciduous trees, and 12 shrubs back into place of the six pine trees being removed. Last but not least, on the north side up here, there is a row of same, same thing. It looks like it was originally planted maybe 50, 60 years ago. There are 22 white pines over there. Two of them, one, two, are close to a swimming pool that's in here and the backyard, and they are multi-meter trees that we have structural concerns about. There are also, when this house was built, there are 22 existing Norway spruce trees along the line that are now between 18 and 24 feet tall. So we are proposing just taking two of the 22 pine trees out of here and replacing them. Not that it needs to be done because it's very, very dense over here, but adding two 12 and 14-foot Norway spruces back in their place to keep consistency of what's already there.
Kim?
I was also at the sidewalk for this one, and an agreement on the removal of the trees. I just had a clarification issue with the plan. I was actually not able to read it via email. I'm looking at it now. The, I know you said the sustainable plantings, the amalanchia and the dogwood and that sort of thing, but it'd be good to annotate how many and kind of where. I mean, the bubble is fine, but like calling out the quantities and the species in there just that the board has something caught by in the decision. But in general, I'm, I'd be.
Any questions?
I actually do. When we walked that, this side of the property, I know you had some more Xs taking out more. These are the ones we finally agreed to the six?
Exactly.
Because the ones we, there were some farther down towards Laurel, which you were not taking out anymore.
That's correct. So we, this is the one that's got the little tree well around it, and these two. This was the one right here that we talked about the most. That's dang.
But then there were some other ones down this way, which we said, geez, do they all?
These are identified as exactly the ones we did at the sidewalk. I did not deviate from them at all. Now, one, one tree back, back here is on plan and per the survey is straddled very slightly over onto her property.
Right.
And so I would only take that if we had permission from Marcy to take, to take that down. Then that's totally up to her. She left me a message saying that, take them all down, I believe was the message, but, you know.
When I speak.
Let's go to her.
So the last X, that tree is on the.
This tree is on, is 100% on the 23. This one here is straddled over just a little bit, and that's confirmed both on this plot plan and is confirmed by survey stakes in the field.
I'm just, no, the only thing I really liked is the fact that you are using the neets and it will add to sustainable wildlife.
Neighbors?
Hi. Marcy Steinberg, next door, 35. I have no problem with removal of, and I have pictures from three owners ago, they're more than 100 years old. I have no problem taking out the pines. Lovely they're not. Dropping garbage, they do. And I know whatever Phil does will be stunning. What I need to share, and I don't know if you want it now or if you want it at a separate venue, the root systems of the pines, as unpleasant as they may be, do utilize the water in the ground. This plan shows the house and all the landscaping to be and has been and whatever. What it doesn't show is the underground basketball court. I have pictures of everything. When the house was built, the water displacement was enormous. I didn't make an issue then. My husband was dying for 10 years of cancer, and then I was rear-ended, and now I've got problems. Not your problem, but I was kind of a little bit buried. The dissemination of what was, and we all like natural west, at least I do, natural western woods, even though I'm from New York, there's an area in my front. My house sits back, their house sits up. Good thing. In the front, there's a, was a very dense natural wooded area, Cornell could attest to, which has been completely decimated except for the hemlocks, which are magnificent, and I know there aren't many left. Couple of the most ancient trees, and I have pictures of the property back in the 50s, met the owners. I have pictures of the dig that as if it were the Freedom Tower behind the house. Displacing water. I'm not an engineer.
Can I just ask, are you concerned that taking these trees out is going to affect the water? Is that a concern?
Not so much table, but you, I mean, I know that there was a request of raising the grade six inches, and I've read the bylaws back to front 12 times. Laurel Road and the farm behind us is flat as a pancake.
Yeah. Tell me your concern about the trees being taken out. I have to think.
Not, it would lessen the usage, the absorption of the water that has already, sadly, I was not physically able to deal with it then. Displacement and the runoff, I wind up with a small pond, and all the trees, with exception of the perimeter, are decimated. There was a woman at the sidewalk, my son was there, who talked about shade.
If we take these trees out, is there concern that it will increase whatever water problems she's describing?
And considering everything that's going to be planted as well.
Right.
Well, yeah, that'll be, they're on four feet, four feet.
Go ahead.
From the original outline.
Are we changing the grades or anything?
Not whatsoever.
No, they, there's no issue on the grades. My son went to the sidewalk, I was in the hospital. The grade was changed, and I'm sorry, I wasn't physically able to deal with it then. And it's all here in full color. But the differential between Laurel Road, pretty much 100% of it, and the height of the house at 23 is over four feet. And on my side, I wind up with a pond. So my concern is much deeper than just the pines. But since the pines are an issue, I believe that they are living things, and they will utilize, do utilize a lot of the displaced water when they're gone. The decorative trees, which it will make gorgeous, because he used to do my property. I will have more of a pond. My people go swimming in it. Drainage. A Bladerpres brought up drainage. I took notes. Yeah, you did drainage for me around my patio way back when. Can't, can't take the house down. The house is wonderful, but it is four and a half feet above the grade that was there before. I don't know how that got passed.
Are you contending that that was done without permitting?
I can't because my husband was dying of cancer, and I didn't have the strength to walk.
I'm a little bit worried that we're a little bit off topic.
That's why I said this might be not the right venue, but can we do something to help? Would you please discuss, doing something to help? The grade that is old news by 10 years and is still disseminating more trees, it is bare.
I think you know me well enough to know that I'll do whatever I can, but I can't change the grades on either property in any way, shape, or form, so.
Is there some, and I don't know if you can do it, or they have to okay it, or you guys have a relationship, and you do great work. Referencing what the Bladerpres said and remembering what you did with our patio, the very steep runoff in my own yard, and I was skating right there for a while until he fixed it. Can something be done to get the runoff that you didn't do? The builder did, and somebody passed it. Imai wasn't here. Did you take the pond out of my front yard so that I could replant grass and trees? Because there's nothing there but bare mud. Take it up, take it up, whoever. And it may not be the right venue, but if they need the opportunity to bring it up.
So Marcy, here's what we were just discussing here, is although it's not, it's subject of the hearing, we'll have Imai and Dana investigate to make sure what was done was. Hope so.
Nobody can take the house down. I would never even think of such a thing.
Therefore, they want to, or they could be encouraged somehow to take care of the issues, to help take care of your water issues as a result.
That would be spectacular.
So Imai take a look at it, see if there's anything we can do. But I think Dave is pretty convinced that the trees taken out will have no worsening effect on that.
Probably not major, but trees do utilize groundwater.
But we're putting in quite a number of new ones.
New ones are going in, is what Dave was saying.
True. Absolutely, and they'll be stunning, but they're not going to down that.
On the next property up, we've kind of had like a similar issue. So I don't know exactly where your issue is, so I'm not going to say, okay, do this from here to here, and do that to that. But with very, very subtle grading changes, we kind of made sure that this property didn't see water from the next property. And so if that's the issue, I think that's something that can be easily done. I just.
We just need to look at it and see where we can take it. Next floor was a little different. I think there was a little bit more room to get grade in between 50 and 23.
I only have like raised it like three or four inches just to kind of keep like, you know, that on. So, you know, it's not going to, like, the hurricane comes. The hurricane comes, it's not going to change, but like on a day-to-day basis. So maybe it's something we can just walk through and kind of talk out. But I don't, I don't have the ability to here to say, okay, from, you know, from 20 feet high to 20 feet there.
I did ask Imai about what he knew when he wasn't around then.
We're going to move on. We've got to move on.
To sort of content contention.
It's probably to be more subtle than that. Yeah, it was like, it's really real subtle on the other one, and I think it could be something like this.
Well, let me know when you want to meet up there. We'll review it sometime.
That's right.
Should I request a meeting with some other committee, or can I?
Why don't you wait for them to meet first and see if there's a resolution?
Okay.
Just like you saw before, neighbor to neighbor.
Okay, any other neighbor?
It's not, it's not like these lovely people that are pleasant. Sorry, I don't want to say it.
So how is this being resolved as far as our decision goes?
That's not related to our decision.
But you said we're, so that we're just like approved.
No, Imai in helping her out separately.
Dating that separate, so we're able to approve the work that's being done here?
I wanted to make sure the planning board had any input before we say that. Any other comments?
I'll meet up at 7:30. Like, I'll drop them off at 7:00, and I'll head up there.
I'll be there.
Thanks for helping out today. So you'll have the decision by? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, Janwyk.
Yeah, well, we can always extend that, Dave, for a couple of minutes.
Welcome to the Western Landscape Show. I'm Stephen. So we have a few people on our sidewalk at, at Chadwick two weeks ago.
Is that available on?
Yeah. We are in the site plan, proposed site plan. Yeah? So just to wind ourselves again, this actually is, this is an amendment from an original site plan review. And if I were to guess, I was kind of following through the files the other day. Yeah, this is plenty more site plan review number two in the archives.
So for those of us.
From 96.
Right, so for those who are up on their site plan review history, when this started, the materials submitted and decisions were much more rudimentary, like consisting sometimes of just a site plan. So detailed calculations, elevations, cross-sections.
Before we landed on the mound.
That all evolved.
It was an infant back then. So just to wind ourselves again, Chestnut Street this way, Regis College over this way, Chadwick Road this way, first property on the corner on the right side. So what we're proposing to do in this is to take down a few dead trees within the, the no-touch zone in here. These are all dead, dead trees that are small caliber, dead on a stick, no cover with them at all. And a few out the edge of the, these were actually planted as specimen trees, crab apples, ornamental crabs and whatnot. They're just seeing better days. So there's very few removals, a few in this zone, a few in this zone. We're going to take the existing overgrown foundation plants and move those out into that area as transplants. Those are. Those are six to seven feet tall at this point, they're all evergreens. And also plant back in this zone, and I'll scatter in here some new hemlocks. There's a quantity of eight of those, and they are seven to eight foot hemlocks. To gain some screening in the corner, screening from the common driveway across the street. And our other, most of our program on this thing is in the back. So that's the enlarged view. Yes. So this isn't really all that well focused, but we're, we're, the existing patio in the rear is this grade outline here. We're adding to the patio here, it's approximately 240 additional square feet of bluestone patio. So we're adding some graded walls here. There are walls at finished grade behind them. Both walls, sets of walls are about two, about three feet tall. With stairs up to planters in here and whatnot, and we can move this way a little bit. Per the sidewalk, we kind of snake these walls around the existing grade lines and got it out of the original no-touch zone. So there's no new grading happening outside of the no-touch. Stepping stone path out to the driveway. We have a generator adding the sound attenuation cover to it. We have a proposed irrigation well doing it off the edges of the driveway, which is located right here. Easiest spot to do it, and a new lighting plan as well for the whole property. All exteriorized are gonna be changed out, since back in 1996, we weren't discussing those things. And there's a full packet in the supplemental that shows the hall of lighting as dark sky compliant, with 14,040 moons.
Okay, that is why I'm asking.
That's okay.
That's fine. Just making sure I got like two steps going right.
So the lighting, the lighting locations, we go back into enlargement again, I can just kind of take you through the lighting locations. It's basically removing every single light on the property and putting them back in with dark second lights. There's no new locations at all here. We have five pathlights here, this is under a covered breezeway over here. Flanking in the back for the patio. Side entrance to the garage, two on the front of the garage, two on the main front door. And then, small hooded wall lights along the path in the back. And then on the driveway, above the stone wall above the driveway. Which there were all lights there before. I have the cut sheets if you want to see the fixtures. And doing the sound attenuation on the generator as well.
You all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Kim?
No comments on this one, it looks fine.
Look fine. Dave, me?
It's nice to see it again.
Great, that calls memory, inform memory?
Her baby's off to college. This is one they have in review.
Right, okay.
Different attention there too.
All right, nothing, go ahead.
How tall are the pathlights?
Pathlight's about 16 inches.
Okay, can you have, is it way up the driveway here?
They're on top of the wall.
So the wall's three feet and then?
No, that wall's only about 18 inches tall.
So 18 inches, then you have another pass light on top of it, there's a lot of, a lot of lights up there. What are they, are they six feet?
No, that wall's 100 and some feet long.
I don't have the scale, so. I mean, you've got, you've got some down at the very, it just seems like an awful lot of light. I know you're under the minimum power.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. Yeah, that's almost similar depth. Do you have a cut sheet?
Yeah, it's the shortest, the 16 inch, that's the light up there.
It's funny, just as a heads up, yeah, I was driving by a place which we had approved a low pathlight. And because of the topography and they put it on top of the wall, it hits you right at the eyes when you're in car. So I'm just being a little more careful and concerned about that.
Yeah, this one, the photometrics from that, the puddle it creates, it really passes out. The puddle is just really small.
Right, it's funny, because as I say, if you had the lamp up here.
No, I agree, no, I've seen it as well.
And when it gets onto a, onto a stone wall, it all of a sudden raises it up. But so this is going to be that.
Yeah, that wall way currently is this small off the driveway.
18, it's going to be 20, it's going to be three feet above the driveway.
About that, yeah.
So when I'm sitting in my car.
Yeah, you're out, you're looking at, you're usually looking at, the window sill of your car is at 44 inches normally. Because that's how we set hemlock heights.
Okay, I've never done like.
Hemlock height is 41 middle inch, as it's kind of flat, it leaves you go to 44. So.
I just wanted to.
Your eye level's at above that, up to 48 plus.
That's a very good point.
Kind of hard to.
Yeah, of course.
Quite a few of them, there's a lot of them, and, and for whatever reason, I was thinking they were, you know, in the wall, embedded in the wall.
They are on the rear, yes.
In the, right, there they are, but they're, they're little mushrooms here on a, on the stake. And so that really puts them up quite high, I think you're right, even though the.
It would be nice if nothing else, take, you know, the one that's right next to the road down. I mean, if you're on your own driveway and you want to have discomfort, but I think the one right by the road should.
Is that realistic, can you do that?
It's supposed, that's over the one at the end, on the wall, certainly.
And you have a post down there.
Yeah, we do, we do, we have a parking post.
This is so really redundant.
Right.
And it's set this illuminated, yeah, and it moves it back a little bit, I think.
They're very close together, I mean, what about just having every other one?
Every other.
Seven of them somewhere there?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, that's, it's a lot.
I pulled three of them out, that's reasonable. No problem, it's under 14.
And then move this one locally.
Yes, yeah, yeah, no, no distributing before anything.
Yeah, that'd be good.
She's mostly concerned about the one.
Yep, absolutely. No problem.
Anything else?
Just save us some money, so. All of that.
I have one question about the number of trees coming out versus whether planted.
Uh, so we're.
Might be on there, but.
We're transplanting nine trees and adding, transplanting nine large shrubs into the, into the deciduous forest area. So we're getting the every screen there, and bringing in eight hemlocks. I think there's about 11 or so, so that gains there. And there's really no evergreen covering that, you saw it, that's all anyways. And we're adding that in, so.
It's been abandoned for now.
Yes, it needs help.
And it does.
Yes.
Wanted to make sure we didn't miss any members, any feedback from the crowd?
Okay. So I'll just adjust the.
Steve, you all set?
Yeah.
I'll just adjust the plan, get that over to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
I think there's a chance you'll bid the decision by?
I think June.
I say June 19th.
Here in June, so.
Yeah, 10 minutes.
Okay. Thank you. No, that was good, just we kept the walls snake around it.
Okay, did you pick a card back?
I think that makes everyone happy, you don't worry about it.
I'm all for the streetlights, this is very nice.
All right, we'll see you guys in a couple of weeks.
Steve Karplos.
Thanks for the pop rock.
One tree removed, I would like.
It depends which tree.
It was, it started with a site visit. And actually, just so you know, we, we had actually hoped, or the order had hoped to take out 12 trees. So that was quite a reversal of fortune. She's unfortunately unable to be in that, but she has accepted her decree of one and was approved by the constipation commission to remove that one tree. With the stipulation that no equipment be driven in. So they're gonna have to climb the tree and then just remove it, but it's not far from the road, so it's very.
Can you show where the tree is?
And also, can you show where the do not disturb from the ConCon was? A lot of the trees that she'd asked to be removed were in the do not disturb area too.
So the tree to be removed is here. And it basically sort of arches over the house like this, it's a big old one. And so some of the trees that she wanted to take were like right along here. What happened was a large, really, I mean, a huge old red maple was growing on a boulder, right? Who knew, there was a boulder under the tree. So it went over like this into the rotting, but it did kind of freak you out, because.
Can you, can you outline where the do not disturb line is?
Um, yeah, it's right here. Oh wait, I'm sorry, it's this one, it's this one, it's this one, yeah, it's this one. And the tree was like, yeah, some of them are right there.
Or was it in the do not disturb ConCon zone?
And what kind of tree are you removing?
It's a red oak.
Yeah, we said, Imai walked out of like the, like he was balancing, it's huge.
No, the one that's, one down. Oh, that one, sorry. The oak is leaning towards the house and is really close.
She really was fearful of the trees for the house. So this one does lean over, and then, and there's white pines, there's things around, and it's just.
The one that you're taking down makes sense.
I'm, I'm here to hear Kim's point of view on that.
I totally agree with that, I mean, that area is spectacular with the moss growth. And that tree is leaning towards the house, I think I was talking there.
No, that's all, no, I have to try to remember the.
Yeah, it's all right.
Dosido.
The new dosido.
Yes. So I would think we're looking.
Are we all set?
Yeah.
Good job.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's great. Decision by?
June 5th.
June 5th.
You're not gonna kill me, are you?
I was about to say. You better stop doing that.
Yeah, where are the weekend in between?
I think we can all extend it.
Thank you, Kim. Nice job. Thanks for the help.
Night.
Couldn't you have that? Okay, decisions?
Yeah.
No, we're not doing 500 lots.
Yeah, we do, have that.
You got the approval not required?
Yeah. Knocked off.
So it doesn't matter? Was I, I wasn't here, you haven't discussed this previously, I.
I'm not sure.
Steve, do you want to?
This is, this is.
Oh, yeah.
No, go ahead.
No, I don't. Doesn't Steve only take a look at you?
No, no.
The ANRs?
No.
Okay, you're kind of curious about it.
No, I mean, you can usually explain to us.
Yeah, right, so that's what I'm saying.
So we're asking Dana to explain.
I mean, I, I don't know, it's probably, it's, it's anybody's.
So this is from the.
Oh, this is from the CPCC.
Right, with the, all of. But where is the new lot that they made? Which one is this?
So Dana, what I'm gonna propose is that we don't need to sign this in.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be rushed, you want to have Imai.
Yeah, let's do that, let's say this way, Imai.
I believe, this is actually Jay's.
He did tell me to sign this, but.
Yeah, Jay's actually coming, he might be able to come later today, this is his project.
And also, the three of us would.
So just let him explain this, and we can just push it off after decisions.
Yeah, okay.
We can make a decision.
Probably five, 10 minutes away.
Okay, great, perfect. Are you, do you need that signed, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm here for 47 actually.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, given that. Say the word. We're passing out the receipts.
Yeah.
Since I wasn't here for the deliberation on these, I will sign this.
Do you want a copy?
Thank you so much.
You have to do it.
This is the final, very important, this is what I'm looking for.
Al, have you signed this? So.
I gotta update that.
You have to update the front page.
I think it actually might have to be out, because he started this project.
No, it doesn't have to be out, it won't be out. Wait, it's.
Usually it's on, on the chair's behalf anyway, so. Imai will sign, sign down there on behalf of Al or someone.
Yeah. Don't have him sign on our behalf.
This is, I just wanted to be made sure, this is the one that basically takes the house down in the front and builds on the knob in the back?
Yeah, and then the pass inside.
Yeah, I do, so when he says follows natural topography in the very first one, I think that's optimistic.
Okay.
So, are we gonna read through the whole thing?
Yeah, read through the whole thing, and then everybody come back and say.
We do cut into, we cut our first floor.
Let's, let's wait, everybody's reading, and then we'll come back.
Yeah, if everyone could just make their votes too, I just gave them my copies, so I'm not gonna. So if you just see.
We have the copy.
Yeah.
Can I move one click? On page four, 16, up to the top, seen maximize, open space, existing house to be replaced with a white flower. How to meadow and the limited tree removal on the 100-foot property zone, the property line. That, shouldn't that be mentioned also under special conditions, that it's to be maintained as a meadow? I mean, it's just sort of like, it should be, will be replaced, but it doesn't talk about the maintenance and the special conditions where we do. So is that right?
Okay. Pens down. Yeah, pens down when you're ready.
So maintaining that, so, make that so far. Yeah. If you were gonna maintain meadow, you have to have at least one in the dwelling. If you were gonna maintain meadow, you have to have at least one annual mowing to take up the woody shrubs.
Yeah.
They can do another mowing in order to, you know, select the lakes or white flowers, but at least you would maintain at least one mowing.
You need at least one mowing.
Okay, that's on, and then meadow, with existing house now stands will be maintained by a minimum of one.
One's a year. And actually, if you remember, the neighbors are very concerned about it becoming a deer park, so I don't know at what point we balance that. Well, she's very concerned of the deer gonna hang out there, she said that.
Deer would really hang out there for the special food, but you know.
We altered the meadow next to be deer resistant.
It really is such an animal?
No, I mean, it's just.
Really?
It was actually three different words.
You picked deer resistant, excellent.
Yeah.
Everybody else?
Steve, so. I'm ready.
You ready?
Yeah.
Okay, Leslie.
Okay. We'll start. Um, page four sixteen, the very first one. Um, I don't think it really follows the natural topography of the lotus. I think that basically you just say minimize development in the wetland buffer. I don't think it does anything in the wetland buffer, does it? It stays completely out of it.
That is the point.
Right, so I think we should just say that minimize development in the twenty-five-foot wetland buffer period. I'm not really sure I'm buying the top because of the, the whole, it's fairly vertical. Um, the second one under B. Okay, B, um, it says development within the wetland buffer of is being minimized. I'd say, it's repetitive, within the wetland buffer is being minimized. Of comes out, okay? Then at the bottom, it says trees along the easement will be left alone, I think we need to say protected and maintained. Okay, because again, we have a very narrow spot between the bridge and the neighbor, so we need to say that.
Okay.
The existing house will be replaced, I think maybe we need to say existing house will be demolished. And I thought you guys said it was gonna be a green demolition, you're gonna reuse it, recycle as much as you can, I.
Donating a significant amount of those.
So let's say we'll be demolished using green strategies.
Right.
Reuse strategies.
Green reuse, right.
Whatever you feel, whatever the right proper term is.
Resource recycling.
To maximize, to maximize re, to maximize use of, reuse of the, of demolition materials.
Right.
Okay? Um, and it says, says with limited tree removal, I wouldn't say limited, there is tree removal, and it's quite a bit if I remember correctly. Um, when, if you want me to slow down, Dana, I gotta throw something, okay? D, um, it said, replacing existing house with meadow and dense buffer, you just say at both, at both neighbors' boundaries or property lines. You're trying to, we have, the buffer is both to the neighbor to the right as well as to the left. Um, with plantings along the north side of the property, we preserve the view from the reservoir. I don't know, I don't think we can say we'll preserve, I think we'll.
Mitigate.
We'll mitigate or something to that effect. We can't, you know, we're trying, but we're not a hundred percent sure. Then, under site disturbance, the drive going along the wetland zone consists of box culverts to mitigate the disturbance of wall, of water flow. And what, we had a bridge, what kind of bridge was it, so it wouldn't be noisy?
It went to two concrete box culverts.
Okay, so.
Rather than one steel bridge.
Right, uh, steel bridge will not be allowed. Then when you go down to F?
Do you think we need to say steel bridges not allowed?
I'd like, because if we're not around and somebody, like, somebody from, from building department says, sure, you can go ahead with the steel bridge, just don't have a problem, it's because of the disconnect. It doesn't hurt. And again, uh, it says adequate buffers, I'd basically say by the installation of a fence and vegetative buffers, tree buffers, you know, planting buffers. And then, let's see. Uh, the very last one, it says a chain link fence with cedar posts will be placed along the west end of the property line to provide privacy. I don't know how chain link provides privacy. I'm not sure which end is the west end. Which is the west?
There's the butter over there.
Is that the one to the left?
Yeah.
I didn't think that was chain link, I thought that was solid.
The one on the left is a six-foot solid cedar fence.
Right, so it's not chain link.
Right, it's to, right, it's to block headlights.
Right, so not chain link. It's a cedar, it's a cedar fence.
But the end of the property actually picks up as cedar and.
Chain link.
Right about here.
Partial, so.
It's cedar and.
So it's a combo, at the, at the close.
Right, it's in the drawing for the, so you can look up.
Yeah, but, but the chain link doesn't provide privacy.
Right.
So say it's a combo, say the cedar, um, fence will provide privacy along the, um, the west side.
Yeah, it's not a part, chain link is not a screen.
Right, C, C, C drawings. Something to that effect.
It's clearly spelled out on the drawings.
Right, they can refer to it. Um, then we get into the boardwalk. Um, here it's talking about elevated boardwalk, later on it talks about it can't be too high. Is there a height we can give it, it shall not be higher than?
We're working with the trails to do it exactly the way that they want, any currently they want it.
It's as specified, as agreed with.
Right, right.
It's TBT, that fluctuates, they don't tell us.
I think that's good, to put that detail.
Right, so here it says planning board engineer consultant is satisfied, you have to say, and as will be agreed to by Forest and Trail and Concom.
Which is three foot wide, not three foot high.
No, I understand, but you didn't specify how high that is. Um, under four, I take out demand to minimize disco along the irrigation. Then, number six, design harmony. I don't know, I think it's more optimistic than I would do it, Dana, and Steve, do you have a thought on that? Is acceptable?
Yeah, I think it's, I was putting the word acceptable.
Just saying acceptable.
Acceptably compatible.
Well, how about just acceptable and cross out compatible with the neighborhood?
Yeah, physics, yeah. And the last one is, well, here, seven under, you're telling it's underground, proposed utilities are shown underground in the site plant and across the wetland, is it across the wetland or not?
Uh, yeah, it goes underneath the culvert, but it's outside of the wetland.
Okay, so then you gotta show underground and underneath the culvert, just to be a little more specific. It's amazing when you go back to this a couple years ago, what was that all about? Well, that's it to me.
Oh, I thought you had a whole other.
No, no. That's my little, no, oh, my little.
She had a new pair of.
Yeah, right, that was some special, yeah.
All right, yes. On page six thirteen, we go on at meadow, or where it previously demolished house now stands.
Right.
Or, how would we say that, where existing house now stands, or.
I don't think you have to say that.
Okay.
Just say maintain whilst our meadow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Minimum.
And that is the only meadow one that's properly maintained, so, yeah, meadow will be maintained by a minimum of an annual mowing.
Actually, you know what you can also do?
So where does that, three meadow on the charge?
Should that go on page twelve, within the.
It should be included on the charge.
If it's not, or just. Okay, we can do that there.
Can we also put?
I want it to be in special conditions.
Deer resistant meadow?
Yeah, exactly.
So item C should be a CC.
Let's just say that most deer, when they're hungry, will be just about anything, so that gets to be really.
My deer would be more rather than my deer.
Preserve standing.
There you go.
Okay, that's up to you.
Well, that's good.
You have that? Create a new condition, that goes under D, preserve standing views.
So just add that same thing.
No, I think it goes under C, because that's where it talks about the.
Maximize open space, okay, that's good.
That should be a CC, CCF point three.
Right. And the timing of that, Steve? That's ongoing.
Remember, Ema will get you.
That's ongoing.
Yeah.
Ocholism, yeah. There is, there's not one for ongoing.
There should be, it should be. Put ongoing.
That's weird.
Yeah. OG ongoing. Okay, Dana?
Yeah, I got it.
Steve?
Yeah, so, um. Special condition F two is not listed anywhere, but I think it belongs under one B. Question I have is whether one B should be both F one and F two, or just F two?
The harm and clearly both, right?
Yeah, I don't think so. And I guess would they both be PTP? I think so. Although there, it does talk about some maintenance, as far as the stones are stable and the tops remain one inch or more above the ground. So maybe it's PTP and OG.
You want to add F two as well?
Yeah. That's to one B.
Yeah.
And then, um. I guess, I'm, I'm not sure F one belongs at D. One D. It's talking about no work should encroach on the conservation land in one D.
Scenic area.
Doesn't really talk about the conservation land, except for the last sentence, that's plantings along the north side of property will mitigate the view from the reservoir, but. I don't know, it's just not.
Change, right?
I don't know if that really belongs there. If, then that would make it a C, not a CC. Anyone object to that?
Which, I'm sorry, which one are you on, please?
One D.
Preserve standing views.
I don't see that as a, we're taking out, and you want to turn it into what, please?
I was just taking out F one, I don't know that that special condition applies to that.
Oh, I see.
Right. Take it out?
Yeah, no, it doesn't, you're right.
And then, um.
It just talked about markers.
Item eleven says CC, but nothing is listed, so I think that just should be a C, unless someone can explain why. Why the special condition should be there.
Right, good. Appendix for F is mislabeled on the bottom.
Someone did you paint on that?
Page mark. Appendix G one, page thirteen.
It's like, appendix G one, it's actually appendix F.
Now, this has been so reworked at this point, should we do this at the next meeting again, just before beforehand? Because this has been really, we were approved with the men's.
Per what you said last time, if they send it to us ahead of time, we can do it individually. And then see if there are any issues.
This was also my version, so it's gonna get a little bit easier as I get to process.
Can I add, sorry, I want to add one more thing, under ten, limit clear, glare?
What number is that?
Uh, one, ten, whatever it is.
Okay.
Speed ten, it says additional plantings and add please, and cedar and six-foot high cedar fence.
That's good.
Say that again, one more time?
Additional plantings and then add, and six-foot high cedar fence, add along driveway to limit glare from the headlights.
Right. There's been a lot done.
Right, if we see this, because this is so reworked, it almost doesn't seem original order in here.
Right.
If, if we can.
So the thing is, we have to vote on it.
I mean, I usually send it, we usually send it to Al, so you were.
How, how, in a hurry are they for this, you know, are they urging us?
Yeah, you.
Yes.
I usually, yeah, the way I work.
I think it's fine, I mean.
I revise this and I send it to Tony.
Yeah. Dana took notes, I'm gonna give this to Dana.
And I can send it to you, you review it, and then we're gonna do it.
Okay.
All right, so do you want to vote on it? Can we all take a look at it? Or is that?
Yeah, we all have to.
But you want to be able to take a look at it.
Yeah.
What kind of people are gonna watch it? Okay, do I hear my?
Leslie should.
I move that we approve forty-seven Ash Street, scenic road, site plant approval with revisions as here noted. And after we approve them in their final form, or look at them in their final form.
Right, yeah.
Period.
Second.
All approved.
I.
I'm not a student. Sorry.
Okay, pretty good.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Adam, too well said.
Does that have to do with what we're doing?
Sort of, it's, it's sort of a process, where can you locate this uncertificated action?
Where can you locate it right now, I mean?
Where can you find them, they're, they're.
You go to the, where does she go to get, for adult, or new, or one being considered right now?
Just the record, yeah, just them in general, not one that's in the process, but them, like, where do they go?
As I understand, it is in each file for each property. So there's a file on the property, and then there will be all the current information and ongoing pending. I don't know whether there's a master list, that's an email question.
I'm sure the planning department will be able to find anyone that you're looking for.
Do they just have them in the file, they're not something you can find online?
Oh, I don't.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think the previous ones.
They're filed with the state as well, aren't they? The plan?
Okay.
So they, they might be, I, I think that's a question for Ema and the planning department.
And John, John Billford now, I think.
Yeah, sure.
All right, next.
Do you want to go back to founder?
Oh, they're here.
CJ? I don't know much about this project, I just wanted to kind of do my.
Here's my expiration.
So this is the lots that were created for the conservation commission by.
Yeah, good.
And so this is the actual farm development piece of land, that was always a part of it, and then Nick had added this lot six. So originally, everybody saw this line through here, and so what we did is then, and the commission had said it was okay to do, we make this little correction here to allow to, to keep this core pond and the plantings that we had along that edge, and then just, you know. So just cut out a couple thousand square feet out of the whole lot size.
All this for that?
Yeah. Because originally, he was actually keeping this whole thing.
So which part is going to Concom and.
To this, and then the whole farming development section.
Okay, and this is a buildable lot?
Yep, everything is buildable, yep, so they, we had done a conceptual, and then the town, they had hired somebody to take a look at the actual worth of the land. And so, yeah, so we had a flex subdivision moving back here, a house there, house here.
But this is all conservation?
Yep, it's all really conservation, and then this deep, this corner, we're doing some of the town as well.
And NF is?
Usually all, everyone.
No, I mean, every one of these copies.
Yeah.
What is NF stand for?
No, form. This way of, uh.
It's from that western.
Okay, or he's helping some.
Is that an initial or a?
Something else.
Is it now the town of Washington?
Right.
I like it, yeah.
Quite efficient.
Right, yeah. Bandit talk.
Good old bandits.
And I know who the real name of that family is.
When I signed this one, this was not.
Yeah, absolutely.
You might keep that one.
Yeah, yeah.
Some wear sharpies.
This is like a planning board meeting on training notes.
It is, well, it's big.
Yeah?
We're gonna.
Oh, we have it at camp.
All right, here you go.
All right, we're all one.
I asked you about.
Maybe he's a person.
Yeah, right, that's not, it's too easy, let us.
I'm gonna get high.
I know.
Hey, you want to hand out the other decisions?
Yeah.
If we can get started.
Yeah.
One variable?
Yeah.
And I don't remember, is this the one that we're talking about, which we do? The subject field?
Yes, exactly.
So I have another description from.
Yeah, why, Leslie, why don't you directly address the issue with.
All righty. I'm gonna add to you, Leslie.
I do, but I don't know, I don't know where we ended up. Oh, I'm sorry, please.
It went back to the original plan, they tried other options.
So I can just reiterate what you were hearing before? So originally, Leslie, you wanted it to be rotated this way?
Yeah.
Similar to that.
We had questions, and now they're wondering what, what you're asking for.
I gotta pull up.
Two things you want.
I guess this doesn't have.
If I remember correctly, they were, they said they were able to use it the old way, save more trees, because they got a little more conservative, is that what ended up happening?
Yeah, I was trying to pull up the email, I just couldn't go through on this computer. Like, long story short, one. Like, long story short, one, this one on the left is not compliant with Title V, and we wanted a better description last meeting.
Yes.
So I have...
Yeah, he sent the whole explanation.
Are you taking this?
I actually just took the MyLock.
Okay, for option 1, the result is septic lines running perpendicular to the existing site contours, which is not recommended by Title V regulations. The septic lines need to essentially parallel the site contours. In this situation, there's no alternatives, the perpendicular lines might be approved, but in the case, there are clearly better alternatives. Option 2 is on the right, so option 1 cannot be done.
So this is pretty much, this is what he said last time, and this is what, now it's written for the decision.
Yeah. Option 2, uh... Is able to get the septic lines close enough to parallel to be as compliant, however, design moves more than 75% of the septic field outside of the approved soil testing pits. So additional soil testing will be required. At this time, there's no way to assert these tests will be acceptable. In addition, option 2 moves the septic fields closer to the house, which will raise the grade of the, which negatively impact the stormwater drainage design is previously approved or proposed as it increased the rate of runoff from yard, uh, yard towards the right side of the property.
Is this one where they're gonna stop if the contouring for the septic system goes on the artificial side, they're gonna ameliorate it slightly? No. Okay, never mind.
So basically, he says that they need additional soil testing for option 2.
Yeah, I hear you.
I don't know, you know, we could leave it as is and...
Yeah, but I thought he did say something about they were able to save another tree when they went back to the original one. They said, actually, there were a couple of trees that they could take pity on.
What I remember is that if they rotated, they could save these trees, and they're not able to rotate it.
You get that in larger, please?
Yeah. So the one I locked as long, you proposed that, uh...
One, giving the, 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 the one that they're, the final one they decided to go with, goes back...
The final one they decided to go with is just this, the one that's kind of seen under the approved site.
And can you get it in larger so you can see whether or not there are trees that are staying, yeah?
So these few trees need to be removed with the box that's not, you know, twisting.
So I guess, if I look at the tree behind it, that tree doesn't look like it has to go.
I think it's still within the radius of...
It was still here.
Yeah.
Because usually that, what I, what I pick up from the other items is that it's that small a radius, that, that the tree has a very good chance of staying. Can you identify what type of tree that is?
Right, 10 inch and away, fine, 12 inch.
Well, you have a better idea, Jenny, actually?
Oh, no, no, no.
Always a better ideas, better ideas always good.
Morning, morning quarterback, you're all here.
Have to do it all, turn it back down. Backseat drivers?
Morning, morning quarterback.
It's always easier after everybody else is all out of them.
We're three minutes from finishing on time.
Hold on, hold on.
I don't know about that. Got some more to do.
I'm just saying. I think that clock is spent. I'm gonna go turn it off.
Yeah, there you go.
Actually, slow.
It's a minute slow.
Oh, no.
So you've got this one right on D. It's one of those large trees with...
You know, it is so limited distributary, yeah. And large trees.
And well, have a large tree.
Wait.
R.
R being preserved.
Exactly. Or match, or now. The door is now mismatched.
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, can I ask, are we... I, I can't remember, is the, is it a well, is there one well for all three of them, or is it a well per unit, per flex?
That would be a well per unit, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, this isn't, this isn't like the...
Doesn't have an association.
This isn't like a concrete load one. So, so, so let's take, I were under four, let's take that demands are minimized for a much, that's really true. And say, law and ergay requires it onsite and it will be provided. Let's just require, say, agreed to provide it, I believe.
Good thing. They're putting in an area.
They're putting in a well, as I thought, I just don't remember the next door or not. And, um, what do you have? You know, under special conditions, um, I don't know where we ended up, but I thought there was a discussion, just talked about rough framing, that it's surveyed by the licensed surveyor, and it's stamped certification by the surveyor show the court. So to in order to obtain the certificate of occupancy, well, I thought we had done something before where we said, it shouldn't just be the certificate of occupancy, it should be the next level of agreement, because you can say, oh, I'm off by a foot, but I'm still gonna frame the house.
Right.
And then I'm, and when it comes to a certificate of occupancy, you go, for me.
Right.
Right, because we usually say something along the line of, if it is, you know, determined by present...
You want an inspection at that point?
Well, we call for one, which is great.
We, we should say it will be renewed, you know, you will not continue along with the building if it's that far off.
There was, there's, there's foreign language we have, I think you've, somebody pulled the old stuff, not the, not the current stuff. Because we don't want them to leave and then build.
That's setting the expectation, if you can continue.
Right.
You can still, you can just take that out.
Yeah, somewhere we, we have said...
We have, we have a way.
If it doesn't comply...
You will, you will take it out, you will not allow to continue on, yeah.
So, so Jack, in the thought, we won't come over from the red plan.
Or you could just have to take out that expectation of, should have to occupy. After rough framing is complete, just say, period.
In order, in order proceed.
In order to proceed.
In order to proceed, that's fine.
Right, yeah.
And if you can find better language, standard...
John Field will probably have something good to bring my way.
There's, there's no variance allowed.
Correct. There you go, something like that.
Variance will not...
Oh, now we got...
Now, now the back of the world, dogs.
Okay, Steve, you done?
No, I haven't started, I'm gonna be done. So, on page 4. Oh, yes, I have. Not that anyone asked before I just started talking.
Yeah, we're getting better.
On page 4, item 1B, change rock to stone. This, because that's what we call it here. Uh, 1D, last sentence, and front of the driveway are being preserved. And then 1F should just be a C with no conditions there, because that has nothing to do with 1F. As well as 8 should also be just a C, because that has nothing to do with 8. And then, item 11, I would make that a CC, and that's where I would put the F1, because that's a zoning requirement. And I would put, as far as the timing, I would put DC during construction.
Over the beat. So we can both of the styles, I love it. That's it.
Anyone else?
Uh, X zoning district? X zoning district?
And the residents are...
Residents, yes.
Oh, that's a new district.
Yeah.
Is that a new district?
Someone just has to fill that in.
I think I was just following the other.
Right, you have to take Al's name. He doesn't name it.
The front page is not...
I move that we...
It's a smile on our, on our faces.
I move that we approve the certificate of action for the flexible subdivision at 1, or the lot at 1 Marion Street as modified.
Second.
I approve.
Aye.
I'll oppose.
We'll both.
Somebody from the audience, that one?
Yes, um, I don't, Ema is not here tonight?
Yeah.
So I know you guys in the town planner report, you have that Ethan skating...
Paul Road.
Yeah, Ethan skating.
Yeah, so it's up.
Okay.
Yeah, great.
Well, the only issue, I think, is that we still have to be with fire.
Let, let's wait, let's...
Okay, what?
What else do we have?
Just hold on, hold on, everybody else happy here?
Yeah.
This 441 Glen, are we having to do that?
Yeah.
Do they have a law? We're gonna hand it out.
Is that just a memo?
Uh, it's two amendments, actually, one on the right of way, and then the driveway.
It's a memo.
Yeah.
This is a memo we're seeing?
Yeah.
All right, yeah.
We, we know, this is the one right now.
We're doing the memo?
Oh, yes, I remember this one.
Many times, Mark.
Few times.
Mine was on the website. It was on the website, the memo would be...
2014. I would have had to please.
No, 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 obviously, it says 5-0.
Well, you voted, Al was here then. Oh, you're here tonight?
Yeah.
Yes, I'll please.
And he's not touching the wall, right? This is also the one with the wall. He tries to, he wanted to move the wall or to upgrade, clean the wall, is that correct?
Yeah.
This is one of the farmer's wall, he wanted to...
He wanted to...
Right, he wanted to, and we said, you, you basically said you cannot change the wall, I want to be clear about that. No, but when he originally requested it, and I want to make sure that there isn't a misunderstanding of which things, because there is an address that you can do it.
Yeah, I think it was, but I can just re-rositate and confirm Ema.
Okay, let's, I would like to put specifically, because the original request asked for reconstruction of the existing farmer's wall, and we said no.
Does not include...
Well, right.
Wasn't that under all other conditions of the above COA remain?
She just wants to be explicit.
Because he, because I don't know what's on that plan, I'm too tired, my eyes hold work.
So be explicit about, this does not include the, the wall that was proposed.
Yeah, okay, I'll make sure, and I'll add that.
This is not by reworking of the farmer's, the farmer's wall shall remain as is. And we told him he wanted to pick up a stove or two, put it back, that's okay, but it's not...
Yeah.
So it should be 4-0 and 5-0?
Yeah, yes.
We've had people before say, oh, but I used to do...
Do you have any comments on this?
Nope.
Exactly.
Any motion, do I hear?
I move that we approve the site plan amendment, approval for the scenic road amendment for 441 Glen to add the driveway paving.
Yeah, I thought you were doing a memo.
With changes there, I'm sorry? With changes just made.
Right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose.
We have a right of way tree.
To your point, Diana, they did say it was a memo.
Yeah.
We just, which property?
It says amendment on...
Uh, 441 Glen.
You were referring to it earlier as a memo.
Before you were doing skating. It's actually an amendment.
Okay.
Should we have one more in here?
Yeah, still tree right away there, I'm gonna...
Who's got it, do we need one to pass out, or am I just...
Tony, can you hold it longer?
Don't do that, there you go.
It's after 10, and it's now the off all part. That's the same one I have.
Oh, you do, permit?
Oh, permit, got it, yeah.
It's, it is after 10.
Okay.
The Quaker 10, right?
Yeah, Quaker 10.
But that says the same information, so I don't understand it. Yeah, this one, they both refer to the... Prior to this, you were talking about the oven shelf field locate landscaping. These are the same under...
What are you, what are you doing here? This is the, oh, this two for the same.
There's one for the right of way tree, and the other one's for the driveway.
But it's, but it's quoting the same information. One, whatever that is. Why is one...
It's all different.
Right of way permit. One's your request to amend the COA.
You think that's the same condition?
Yeah, that's what was confusing me, same much.
Well, one's pursuant to Article 23, and the other is pursuant to Section 11.
Right, it just said they have the same, the...
Condition.
Condition, that's what confused me. It, it applies to both, and that's what it is. I guess it does apply to both, and that's how it works out, okay.
Steve, you also?
Yep.
Okay.
So that just should be 4 instead of 5 as well?
Yeah, 4 instead of 5. Motion?
To approve the scenic road right of way permit for 441 Glen, the tree will be in the right way. Second if I...
Not modified.
Has modified?
You second?
Yes.
I'll approve?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Okay. Very good. There's one item from...
For June 5th, it's crazy.
Oh, any approval for minutes? Okay.
I wish I could do any...
I, I gave them, but I have questions for you minds.
Okay, you're not ready. Okay, did you want to talk about the... So there's one item from the plan report?
Yeah, so the blasting, I was talking to Marge today, and apparently, I mean, we're talking fire tomorrow. I don't know if it's approved by them.
Are you talking about fire tomorrow? About what?
About the blasting permits, and then about with the driveway.
So, my name is Jonathan.
Hi, John.
We, I'm the builder, and I've issued a building permit, foundation only, by the building department. So we moved all our equipment on site, obviously, being blasting what it is, it's loaded with ledge, so...
Which one's, what is the address?
18 Skating.
18 Skating.
Okay, now, sorry, take a moment.
The board has used to do the foundation work, and so they're hitting ledge, so that's...
Yeah, that's right, so...
So, I've been issued a building permit, and with Ema's approval, and I'm moving all my equipment on site, ready to go. And of course, we hit ledge, and part of the COA is, I need to come back to you to get approval for that, showing our dust controls, and all of our basic control, site controls. And we've done all the blasting requirements, we've done all the notification of letters, we've done all the surveys within 700 feet of the house, and we've placed a block as what you do in your plans require. And now, we're just coming back to, we recommend, required, request your approval for that blasting procedure to proceed.
This is typically administrative approval? Blasting approval?
Yeah.
And do you want me to go back fire department, something?
Fire department is not...
Fire department is a threshold that, we, we require a threshold above...
We have notifying neighbors. Your board, your board just notified us.
Okay, and, and we didn't hear back from neighbors, is that right?
And I have, exactly, and I have the permit from the fire department.
And, and no neighbors responded?
No, and no, all neighbors responded.
Oh, okay.
Because we had to go into their homes...
I see, okay, some of them...
And do the surveys, but it's all private.
Okay.
So it's...
Do we have copies of all that, have you, has it been put on the checklist?
The way it works is you can't...
You can't what?
You can't have copies of that.
Private, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
But it exists and evolved, and I have, Ema's got a letter stating that he's got the copies.
Right.
And if there is ever an issue, then it goes to court.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then it becomes public. Then it goes public.
Okay, so you have sent a letter saying you've done, you fulfill all requirements, purposes only, and accord.
This is all I have.
Now, I have another comment back for a moment. I believe you do not have a full building permit, you have a foundation permit.
Correctional, correct.
So let's be very clear about that.
Absolutely.
Until we get a sidewalk for the...
Yes, right, I just wanted to make sure we're all in agreement. So let's read, put this in here, so.
So this is the letter stating that the surveys have been done, but they go into...
That's fine, you do the escrow, yes. Fascinating. And what is, can you scroll up, bottom thinking?
Stan, scroll down. Dan, Dan, Dan.
I think that's it.
That's it?
I think it's just Dave's signature.
Okay.
So what's picked up for you, something else? Party, it could be...
It's someone's Facebook, it's not potential.
Yeah, absolutely right.
Is this what our certificate of action says about blasting?
State should get a public hearing.
So it's the neighbors, it's the neighbors.
But it, does it say it needs to be maintained as a secure place and no individual, blah, blah, blah?
That's the state, right? That's the actual...
There's state, there's fire, and then there's us.
Yeah, exactly.
The value add that we have is we engage the neighbors.
And then, yeah, you push it further. And we push it further.
Yeah, right.
Twice.
So... EMI said to me, this is typically administrative approval, but given the sensitivity of the property, he said, he just wanted us to know about it.
Sure.
So if anybody has any objection, people don't have objection, I'm gonna recommend that EMI approves it tomorrow.
When is the, when is the blasting? When is the blasting?
When you plan to do the blasting?
Well, depending on your approval tonight, technically, I need twenty-four hours to notify everybody. And I've got to have fire and... Probably Monday, Tuesday. Because these guys move pretty fast, once we get...
And what's gonna happen to all the ledge you blast out?
It's gonna pretty much stay on the cycle.
So I'm just gonna push up about one day, okay? So I'll be in touch with EMI tomorrow. So EMI, I'll be in touch with you with administrative approval. But just, we didn't have a long chat about this on the phone, so I'll have a longer chat tomorrow, make sure you didn't have any issues about it.
Okay.
And even though we have a lot of ledge, we haven't done that for a while, so...
No, that's true, and he did...
Training policy.
Yeah, he wrote me an email saying we're not...
Training policy.
Probably, I think he said.
Yeah.
Thanks for saying that.
Thank you.
There's other things on his town planner report, I don't know if I should talk to it.
But there is a question regarding the next meeting. Is it going to be Thursday, June sixth, and Thursday? Well, we just talked every single person.
Okay, okay, we can't change anything, it's already scheduled.
Are they already scheduled?
Yeah, so it's June fifth, June nineteenth, July tenth, and July twenty-fourth.
Okay, so the new schedule wants to kick in in September, is what you're saying?
Yeah, let's do that, is that okay?
Starting Wednesday in September?
Sep, yeah, in September, it will probably be September fifth, that's a question mark.
Our next two site visits before our next meeting is ninety-eight Love Lane on the twenty-eighth. I believe that's at eight AM, and then Artisan School also.
Given that Kim had the objections at ten o'clock start, I think we should listen to her.
Well, I think it's too late.
It's already scheduled.
And then I might have...
You know, maybe it's Wednesday that she's objecting to, rather than keeping on Tuesday. You have to talk to her.
Yeah, I can coordinate.
So you have, you will send these out?
What's the Artisan?
What is the Artisan school?
It's like, so it's a residential building, they're putting like a, it's like a music program or something.
Oh, the one on Boston Post Road?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That, the...
Oh, okay.
Big, 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 whatever.
Nice, nice, nice. So let me just go back for a sec. So the one for skating pond road, that sidewalk is Wednesday's, that's still in June sometime?